Tonight, Saco City Council meeting for Monday, January 22, 2024. Like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Would like to make notice that we do have all members of council present this evening, including City Administrator John Mahenko. Please stand me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. That now takes us to item four, which is general. There is no general comments this evening. Item number five, committee correspondence to council. Are there any committee correspondence? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of particular interest to council and I think the public overall, Traffic Safety Committee met last Thursday, and we did vote to, I guess, retain Cuts Avenue as a one-way. Supported by residents. I think most of us felt that it improved traffic flow and pedestrian safety. I know that at least one other counselor, Counselor Gunn specifically, expressed concerns about it. What I will say is that designation of traffic control does fall under the purview of traffic safety, but with that said, there is a provision in the ordinance that allows a counselor that was there, myself included, to bring it to council level. So if that's something that you'd like to address at a future council meeting, I'm certainly willing to have a discussion, but it is in line in keeping with the parking study that we had commissioned several years ago. So overall, that's why I supported that and having heard from many of the residents on cuts. So just thought I'd report that back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional correspondence? Okay, not seeing any. We move on to item number six, and that is public comment. We do have two members of the public wishing to speak tonight. First, we do have Jane Karen. Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco. And I want to thank you all for your work for the city and the citizens of Saco. It's very much appreciated. Madam Mayor, when we spoke during your campaign, I was very happy that you were committed to reviewing the experience and benefits offered to the city when citizens apply for positions to serve on the planning board or commissions or other boards. And I want to thank you counselors for your careful review and voting to fill those positions. I look forward to any discussions at this evening's workshop. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your commitment to scheduling these workshops. I think citizens really appreciate that. And I can see how positive this path is for open communication and honest, productive, and progressive government. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, next up, we do have David Plaven.
I'm David Plaven. I live at 36 Lower Beach Road in Saco. A couple of years ago, I was on a panel focused on coastal erosion, and Camp Ellis was a subject at that meeting, and somebody had asked why we didn't all just abandon our homes and retreat from the coast. And we reminded that person that asked that question that the reason we don't is because this is not something that is natural, it's something that was man-made, something that was thrust upon us by the Army Corps of Engineers. And that, so after three generational storms, after two more generational storms in three days, the third and fourth in the last five years, our outrage at the Corps' lack of response and years of inaction is an all-time high. It's because the tragedy was thrust upon us that we keep going. We're not going to surrender to the Corps, and it's only the resolve of a tight-knit, historically significant community that we keep rebuilding. We're an integral part of this city, and after all our progress from last summer, we very much want to be here. Entering this winter, we knew the risk was high. The beach is all but gone. There's no protection from storms except diminishing dunes and rock seawalls, which are notorious in their own right for not producing the results intended. The only year in the past seven where North Avenue was not destroyed or at least rendered impassable was the year after the Saco River was dredged and that sand was placed upon the beach, so we had some protection. So it's an indication that dredging is something that can help us. But of course, that sand quickly migrated north, propelled by the waves created by the jetty. So we cannot wait for the Army Corps. Another three years before they propose to start work, and who knows what will be left at that point, we need to take action. If the situation is the same in November 2024 as it was in November 2023, we're tempting a very cruel fate. The entire coastline community is hurting, wondering what is next, how this might end. We must take action now to assure any future. We ask that the city form an emergency committee and start with a one-, two-, and three-year plan to implement quick fixes. That plan should ultimately extend further into the future. We do have some options. Work with us to solve them so we don't have to give up what we value, our history, our importance to this city. This situation needs to be treated for what it is, our last chance, unless everyone be reminded, the cost of doing nothing or retreat will extract the biggest price of all. Thank you. Oh, and before I sit, I'd like to thank the city, the mayor, Counselor Berman, Fire Department, Police Department, especially Public Works for their response. It's been amazing. Public Works has been down there like every day, and the work they do is just incredible, and we're all grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. That is all we have signed up for this evening. If anybody else from the public would like to speak, please step to the podium.
My name is John Collins. I live in Biddeford. Is it? I'm here to speak about the Transportation Center, which I'm a regular user of. Can I?
Okay.
And I noticed that it's in the workshop that's after, so I'll be staying for that. So just very brief background, again, my name is John Collins. I live on Highland Street in Biddeford. I've lived there for about five, six years. I'm a professor at the University of New Hampshire. One of the keys to moving up here was that I could take the train back and forth every day, which I've been doing for five, six years. And a nice part of that was the day lot parking. For those who don't know it, Transportation Center, when you enter to the right is a day lot, it used to be a day lot, where you could park from 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM, something like that. To the left is a 14-day lot. Couple months change ago, the change, the 14-day lot added a $5 per day fee. More recently, the upper lot, what we call the day lot, is now a two-hour parking. So I have two points on that. One, it's added some real inconvenience to the eight or 10, 12 regular users of the train back and forth to UNH and a couple back and forth to Boston add expense. The other, it has rendered that upper lot essentially useless. Having a two-hour limit, no one who uses a train can park there for two hours. And it's not really any other place that somebody would go, there's parking closer to that other place than that lot. And today, there were three cars parked there in the morning when I left, and there were two parked there tonight when I left. And I don't know if they're going to be ticketed or not, but... So it's added a great inconvenience and an expense to the regular users, and it's rendered the lot useless. So I'll be anxious to hear what the rationale for those changes are. Thank you for letting me.
Great, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. Thank you, Tricia Hewitt. I want to welcome you as the new ward six counselor. Thank you for your service. Thank you, Mayor Jody, for placing the rules of business on a council workshop for open discussion, and to Counselor Hatch for your deep dive to address many issues concerning the lives of citizens who already live here in the city of Saco. Its planning board and your proposed amendments by strengthening the process of appointments, approvals, addendum to applications resumes, proposed press release, and proposed amendment to O, planning board. Saco needs this level of scrutiny for council approval. Please set the expectations and the rules of business for yourselves and this particular board. I also agree that a real estate broker should never chair the planning board. Real estate brokers by their DNA are salespeople who strongly advocate for their sellers, buyers, and developers in obtaining their individual dreams. We take counsel as a real estate broker. We take countless classes, learn scripts, and are quite persuasive in our individual expertise. Real estate brokers' expertise do warrant a seat on the planning board, but never as the chair. Is everyone, I'm just going to go quick line items for your discussion. Is everyone okay with the Roberts Rule of Order or a modified version being reviewed again? Are there any gray areas to address and clarify that you had previously? Could this council mandate, where applicable, that all 18 standing committees and 13 ad hoc committees add a public comment, a council liaison communication to that board, and committee board discussion to every agenda for transparency and inclusivity, for consistency and a better understanding for all involved? What committees have two council members that have voting privileges per 3E? Knowing that will lessen any potential confusion. And where is that list? If you look in your packet, you will understand what I'm saying there. 3E, number five, simplifying the language and intent. The first part of that standard is no person should serve on more than one board commission at a time. Then it says some other interesting facts that that should be considered more than the first one. 3G, the city solicitor shall serve at the will of both the mayor and the city council. Is there a contract between the city and city attorney? That's not on the Rules of Order of Business, but I am definitely curious on that, since we are talking on that subject. Mayor, could you please consider asking for citizen input beyond our three-minute public comment and public hearing comments on in-depth new business or workshop items? Our allotted three minutes is sometimes not enough time, and the public rarely has access to our letters submitted to the council. Since we now have video, it would be inclusive and transparent for those watching. The parking study tonight, thank you, Mayor, for adding this dusty STANTEC study presented to the council in early 2022 to the council's workshop discussion tonight. As many know, I have reviewed many traffic and parking studies dating back to 2015, be it STANTEC, SOUL, MDOT, developers, many at taxpayers' expense, whereupon time, money, resources were expended. However, barely any or no walk to the talk has transpired. If the council chooses to walk this talk, please consider the following comments, reviewing, analyzing all past studies, update data to current conditions, and engage in citizen participation. This 2021 parking study was performed during the pandemic era.
Kelly, not to cut you off, but we are over a minute at this point, if you just want to finish up. Thank you.
Four more, five more lines. Thank you very much. The Saco Parking Studies Zoom Meetings with business owners' entities as guests, 73 survey respondents, low stakeholder engagement participation. Were there any citizens involved? Were any recent complainants part of that survey? Where was the discussion by elected officials for the Amtrak Lot New Revenue? It was in the budget equations last spring, but were elected officials informed of the details? Should the newly acquired parking lot for $5 for the time being be... Should the newly acquired parking lot be $5 for the time being until this walk is vetted? If the council decides to choose not to do anything, let's not continue to have study after study with no actions in place at the cost of the taxpayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, any other member wishing to speak?
Hi, good evening. I'm Inga Brown, and I live at 161 Simpson Road. I echo many of the comments this evening by Ms. Karen and Ms. Archer. I also didn't know about the parking lot at the train station, the upper lot, no longer being a two-hour lot. And I would agree with the professor from University of New Hampshire that a two-hour lot next to the train station makes absolutely no sense. I'm here this evening. I did review pages 10 to 13 in the packet this evening, and this is part of the materials that Counselor Hatch has brought forward to you regarding the planning board. And I simply wanted to say that I think it's extremely appropriate and fitting for the council to have a very robust discussion over increasing the call for candidates moving forward and to make very clear to candidates the incredible level of analysis and reading that they will be doing if they step forward, throw their hat in the ring at the planning board. Those planning board meetings, those packets are incredibly challenging. I think that it's really fitting for planning board members to be vetted a little more carefully and for their background to be reviewed to see really what their skill sets are. So I am very excited to see that. I also would agree that having a real estate broker lead the planning board as chair is inappropriate, so I hope that there'll be discussion around that. I'd also like to say that for many, many years now, maybe a couple of years, many members of the public have asked for public comment to be part of all of the standing committees. I know there's some detail to work out there, but I think having a three-minute public comment period after the correspondence at all of these committees is extremely important. I think it's extremely logical, and I think it's another way for citizens... for the Amtrak Lot New Revenue? It was in the budget equations last spring, but were elected officials informed of the details? Should the newly acquired parking lot for $5 for the time being be? Should the newly acquired parking lot be $5 for the time being until this walk is vetted? If the council decides to choose not to do anything, let's not continue to have study after study with no actions in place at the cost of the taxpayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, any other member wishing to speak?
Hi, good evening. I'm Inga Brown, and I live at 161 Simpson Road. I echo many of the comments this evening by Ms. Karen and Ms. Archer. I also didn't know about the parking lot at the train station, the upper lot, no longer being a two-hour lot. And I would agree with the professor from University of New Hampshire that a two-hour lot next to the train station makes absolutely no sense. I'm here this evening. I did review pages 10 to 13 in the packet this evening, and this is part of the materials that Counselor Hatch has brought forward to you regarding the planning board. And I simply wanted to say that I think it's extremely appropriate and fitting for the council to have a very robust discussion over increasing the call for candidates moving forward and to make very clear to candidates the incredible level of analysis and reading that they will be doing if they step forward, throw their hat in the ring at the planning board. Those planning board meetings, those packets, are incredibly challenging. I think that it's really fitting for planning board members to be vetted a little more carefully and for their background to be reviewed, to see really what their skill sets are. So I am very excited to see that. I also would agree that having a real estate broker lead the planning board as chair is inappropriate. So I hope that there'll be discussion around that. I'd also like to say that for many, many years now, and maybe a couple of years, many members of the public have asked for public comment to be part of all of the standing committees. I know there's some detail to work out there, but I think having a three-minute public comment period after the correspondence at all of these committees is extremely important. I think it's extremely logical, and I think it's another way for citizens, if you are going to attend a committee meeting, to be able to speak during a public comment period very briefly, is extremely important. And I think we all are on the same page of seeing more people attend meetings. And the committee meetings are where the meat and potatoes are. And we want people to be fully engaged in that process. So I look forward to your robust conversation tonight during the workshop. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other members? Okay, not seeing anybody wishing to be acknowledged. We will move on now to item number seven, and that is the approval of the minutes for January 8, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, roll call vote. And just for the public's knowledge, we will be skipping over Ward Six Counselor at this point until she is officially sworn in under the action item, the first action item. Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Parks.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes to approve the minutes, 6-0. Okay, now we will move on to item number eight, and that is the action items. And our first action item this evening is the swearing in of elected official, City Councilor for Ward Six, Tricia Hewitt. Have you raised your right hand? Do you, Tricia Hewitt, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Maine, and that you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the city of Saco, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Ward Six, City Counselor? Congratulations. Congratulations and welcome, Tricia. We're excited to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Okay, that will now take us to item B, and that is one reading, the authorization for an emergency purchase and financing of a chipper. And that is assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Significant costs are being incurred by Parks and Recreation to keep its chipper running. The nearest repair garage that can fix the chipper is in Woburn, Massachusetts. This is because the original, more local dealership that sold the chipper to the city of Saco in 2017 is no longer able to service the engine. While awaiting repairs, Parks and Recreation is incurring significant rental costs for replacement. So Parks and Recreation is asking for an emergency exception to the city's purchasing policy for the purchase and financing of a new chipper. The total financing amount of the purchase would be $48,995. The first payment is due January 15, 2025. Therefore, no other funds are due in fiscal year '24. Therefore, this amendment to the city's five-year capital plan can be approved in a single reading because no formal change to the city's budgeted appropriation is required. Rather, council is simply approving incurrence of additional debt. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the emergency purchase and financing of a new chipper.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just have, I'm certainly going to support this acquisition. I just had a couple of clarifying questions, if I may. And I'm not sure who I can direct these to, but let me just get the question out there, and then we can decide who can answer that for us. The memorandum that came to the council from Glenys and Ryan, last paragraph talks about the down payment for the purchase can be covered by the city's contingency. And I don't know that there is a down payment. Okay, so I'll let.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. This memorandum was put together before we finalized our review of the financing. And in the financing document, we were able to have them have our first payment January 1, 2025. So that, and it's, and the rate is 5.92, I believe.
Yes, I saw that as well. So just for clarity purposes for the public, there is no, there is no down payment component here.
There is. What I did is I wanted to include the memorandum, but I made sure that the comment that you referenced just earlier did not include that.
Okay, thank you. And then one other, just housekeeping question. The reference, the paragraph above that talks about that the, once the warranty period ended, the city public works mechanics could repair, which I have no problem with. But during the warranty period, are we talking about service from the Sanford location?
Yes.
Is that what we're talking about? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Yeah, the previous engine is a Cummings engine of the old one, and they don't service them in this area anymore.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. First question, just, again, maybe there's a rationale behind this, but given the rather small amount of only $48,000 that we have a contingency fund plus an unassigned fund balance, was there any thought to just buying this outright and not? And I recognize it's $11,000 or so in interest, but why pay it if we could just buy it?
Yeah, and I did it for expediency this time. And it's a good point, Counselor, because I'm talking with the finance relative to how we do these master leases with the various products that we put in our rolling stock, which is one of them. I'd like to take a look at how we might, over time, do what you're suggesting with certain size. In fact, I don't want to get too far into it, so I won't. But there might be, depending on the cash available, we might be able to finance them in-house, so to speak. I won't get into the specifics of that, but we could do, if we have cash available, rather than going out and investing in ex treasuries, we might want to look at having a five-year lease that we do internally so that, because I don't want to change the whole system now because we're on a specific replacement schedule. But something we can look at during the budget process and maybe come back to is, I'd like to maybe take a look at maybe doing some internal borrowing from ourselves. That way, we could charge back the interest, but still let it stay internal, so we're not giving it to an outside entity.
Yeah, I would, again, given the lower amount, I would prefer in the future we do that. I mean, obviously, we're not going to do this with a fire truck, for example.
And you know what? Let me, I'll take a look. I've been talking to finance and we're, you know, like I said, I don't want to upset the apple cart right now, but it's a good point. I've been thinking about it. And I'll get back to the council relative to that idea. I think it's something worth exploring further.
I just have, I guess, a house cleaning issue or something I noticed. I had realized this several years ago. But we currently have a policy in place for purchasing. But the charter requires we have an ordinance in place. And years ago, the ordinance was repealed and replaced with a policy. So we're out of align, alignment with the charter. And me personally, sitting here, I might not see that big of a deal with it, but I could see where potentially it could lead to issues when it comes from, say, someone that's a dealer, and we're not following our own charter. You know, maybe they lose out on a specific bid, and, you know, they do one of those "I gotcha" type deals. Do I just, it's something I think we need to clean up.
Yeah.
And I can, you know, send that to you on the aside. It's just something I recognize that under charter requires we have an ordinance. And I think I was seated here several years ago when the administrator recommended we replace it with a policy, but we actually deleted the code altogether.
Right.
So there's conflict.
And yeah, I don't disagree with you. I'll check the charter tomorrow, and I'll talk to the staff. The one thing that I also wanted to maybe talk to the mayor about, I briefly discussed, we should, how we have our policies categorized and how they, you know, I'd like to start seeing more things reduced and to a writing of policy if there's not an ordinance in place so that we can go back and look at things that the council has asked us to proceed with. But I will look at that tomorrow relative to the charter. Anything in the charter that references ordinances should be kept in place. And if that's the case, then I will work with staff on bringing something back and discussing it with the mayor.
Thank you.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just wanted to add a layer to Counselor Johnston's comment here in the event that you want to shift gears and maybe fund this in another manner. You all, I'm sure you're aware of this, there are no prepayment penalties in this transaction. So you have every opportunity to.
Correct.
Change and whatever you want to do. Yeah, so.
Okay, any other discussion or comment? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was also just going to ditto, I was about to make the same point. I was reading that we're, when we're at 5.92, we no longer have favorable interest rates.
Right.
So that's when I started thinking.
Exactly.
Not necessarily create a policy around it, but to take that into consideration when you're looking at 5.92 for small items, maybe it just makes more sense. And then I also did read that there was no prepayments, so that gives us options throughout the rest of this year.
So, and again, a good point. I'm now starting to talk to department heads and the finance department about, as we go forward to the 2025 budget. And I'm very interested in maybe having an internal borrowing system so that we can stay on our same schedule, but what we're doing is internally borrowing from ourselves.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to item nine, and that is the administrative update.
Thank you, Your Honor. What I'd like to do is ask the Public Works Director, Patrick Fox, come forward and talk a little bit about the storm that we have all experienced. And I have a written comment that I provided to city councils, as well as putting it on the web. But I think it's important for Director Fox to give you an update.
Thanks, Administrator Hankel. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm sure you're all getting a lot of calls and, you know, wondering a lot of things about how it's going in recovery of the storm. I'll just tell you, we've spent, we have spent pretty much every day down there in one capacity or another, meeting with a lot of homeowners individually. They're a resilient bunch along our coast, as you know. So the conversations have been, you know, tough to see what people are going through down there, but very positive in that we're working collaboratively to piece together public infrastructure and private infrastructure at the same time. So it's, we've been through this a lot down there. So that's not a good thing for those who live down there, but it is a good thing from a staff standpoint as far as how well we can adapt and kind of move forward with it. So we have, we're taking steps to restore the public infrastructure at the same time being mindful that a lot of our expenses should be, if all goes well, eligible for FEMA reimbursement through a disaster declaration. So we're just cautiously approaching, sort of in both ways, documenting everything we're doing, taking steps that we know will meet approval to get federal funds. So categories, just so you know, that we track are debris removal. That could be anything from trees to buildings to utility lines that are down, whatever debris is in the roadway. Emergency protective measures when we're running around, closing roads that, over time, and equipment we use is eligible for reimbursement. Roads and bridge reconstruction, water control facilities, which include our barriers and rock walls along the coastline. Any utility lines that are damaged, be it underground sewer or drainage lines that take on a lot of sand or wash out. And Parks and Recreation category for us, that would be all of our beach walkways through the dune systems, the boat docks, and the pier, which were also, so all of those categories sustained damage for us. Preliminary estimates are somewhere over $300,000 in damage. You may hear larger numbers from similar communities. Part of it is just that we sustain damage regularly. So we put our roadways and utility systems back together in a way that can sustain the next, you know, can withstand the next storm, maybe a little bit different than communities that don't face that as often. So our restoration costs might seem a little lower than some of the communities. It's just simply that we've rebuilt the things so many times that we've had the opportunity to move a lot of our utilities out of harm's way. So that's why the costs are a little bit lower for Saco when you see them compared to other communities. So as we go forward, I just, some of the things that are being discussed, and we can certainly bring forward discussions in more in depth with the council at a further workshop, would be, there's a lot of people requesting sheet pile walls, like the one we did north of Camp Ellis, up around the Fairhaven Eagle Ave area. That wall has performed very well. There are some really specific areas you can install those, and a lot of hoops to jump through to get vertical walls like that permitted through DEP and Army Corps of Engineers. So there are places where they're, they work, and there are places where they don't. There are places where we can permit them, places where we can't. So that is something that the public is looking for more, and we can discuss the pros and cons and where that might be able to happen. They can cost up to $1,000 per foot by the time you're all in for costs. So per linear foot you go along your coastline can cost you up to $1,000. A lot of resiliency plans. You're going to see talk of raising existing roadways. Our challenges are we have very few coastal roadways that we could raise the elevation of without impacting access to driveways, walkways, front doors of people's houses, the homes in our, you know, in our area, in our coastal area, like a lot of communities, are, some of the homes are only 5, 10 feet off the road[1623.92] some of the homes are only five, 10 feet off the road or the right of way. So very difficult to raise the roadways without impacts to private infrastructure. And then you'll often hear, a resident spoke to it today, but why don't we just retreat? And I think, you know, that, that is obviously a policy decision if it were to happen, but Public Works, staff, council, we're all committed to the coastline we have today. We rebuild in place. Where practical, we work together to move things out of harm's way, like utility access or overhead utility lines that might fall across a roadway and eliminate access during a storm. So that's just kind of where we stand now. Everything, I'm confident that everything will be back to the way it looked last summer by the time, by the time we get to summer. A lot of the stuff that we have to put back together, we need pavement and concrete and those materials that are not so conducive to doing during the winter. So it will be temporary access and some roads closed until mid-April, probably first of May, by the time we're all put back together. Any questions on that? I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Director Fox, and appreciate all the work you guys have done down there.
Thank you.
Counselor Berman.
Yeah, maybe not so much a question, but I had the opportunity to be down at Camp Ellis on several occasions after the storm and saw your team at work and talked to a lot of residents and only heard positive things about the work your team was doing. They were working hard, they were working throughout the storm. People felt the impact of your department and were really very grateful and appreciative for all the work you're doing. And I'm sure you'll continue to be a partner as we move forward with, like David Plaven said, thinking about the plans for the next year, two years, and three years until the Army Corps comes. So just really thank you and your department for all the overtime and all the hard work.
Oh, thank you. I'll pass it along to those doing all the actual hard work.
Please do. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pat, this is more of a house, again, housekeeping question because I've gotten conflicting information on this because I haven't been down there, obviously, in respect for the people that are working on it. The condition of the pier, is it structurally sound? How bad a damage are we talking about? Because I've heard conflicting information and I'm just curious for the public's knowledge, because I mean, obviously it's an old pier though, so, you know, prudent going forward, I mean, how we take care of it and everything.
Yep. I would say you're hearing conflicting information because it is unknown at this time. So anyone saying that they know what the condition of the pier is, we have not had a structural assessment. We've done some basic looks. I don't feel like it's, you know, it's not damaged beyond repair. It's not damaged to the point where it's, it's dangerous to be on, but we do have access to it limited right now. We're going to have a structural analysis done. That's part of the costs that we're trying to potentially recover from federal, federal authorities as well. But we'll have a structural analysis done. There are several docks that have to be replaced, but the pier itself did not seem to sustain catastrophic damage, I guess.
Administrator Hankel.
I just want to again echo whatever everybody else said. Not only Public Works did an outstanding job, but you had the fire and police out there. So we had a team effort that really worked through this very hard. Thank you.
Detective, complete your administrative.
Yes, yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 10. Any council discussion and comment? Okay, not seeing any. Moves us to item 11, and that is an adjournment from our regular meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Parks.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt? And Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes seven zero. Okay, so we have completed our regular meeting. That we now move on to our Saco City Council Workshop for Monday, January 22nd, 2024. Call the workshop to order at 7:08. And we do have three items on the agenda this evening to discuss. And just so that everybody is familiar with the process for our workshop, this is an open discussion. We do not follow parliamentary rules or the modified Robert's rules. It is free flowing in conversation. So the first item that we do have is our council.
Excuse me, Your Honor, I've just asked if Michelle could come down. She's going to take notes because I know there's going to be a lot of conversation and just trying to keep it somewhat orderly.
Yeah.
And one thing I would just add that once this is all completed, what our intent would be is to try to circulate these rules in order to the council, mayor and council, and from there determine when to actually make the approvals, because at some point you're going to want to approve something that has been redlined. And so that's why Michelle is here, and I want to thank her for coming out to do this.
Let us know when you're all set. Okay, so I thought the easiest way probably to go through this is, we did kind of on a late notice ask for any early amendments. We did get a couple submitted by Counselor Hatch and Counselor Gunn. So what I thought I would do is, we can touch base on each section. Some, of course, are easier than others. So under the first section, purpose of Saco's procedural, excuse me, Procedures Manual. Did anybody have any changes or discussion with the guard with that? Okay, I personally, I did have down that I would like to review the council vision as a council and possibly review that. Counselor Hatch had also made note to see if we can maybe reword this to kind of fit our comp plan vision. And then I also, for me personally, I had added, keeping the top part the same, but adding as well as preservation of our shoreline and abundant natural resources. We make no reference to our shoreline or our resources. Go ahead, Mike. No, you don't have to be.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Don't have to be called on tonight.
That's a dangerous precedent, this, Madam Mayor. I guess when I read these values, I see they differ a little bit from the comprehensive plan or the values of the city. I view these as the values that, that council itself should maintain in our interactions with each other and with the public. So while I favor the shoreline, would love to see that added anywhere, that that is a distinction that I note, that there are values for the city and where we're going in our comprehensive plan. There may be other values for the city elsewhere, but these are our values and how we will interact and engage with each other. So to me, there is some distinction there that's appropriate.
How do other other councils look at this?
I can just jump in?
Yep.
All right. I'll say what I have to say at the beginning, because I've wrestled with this for many years now. And several months ago, when I sat down to take a deep dive at this again, I really came to the conclusion that a lot of what we're proposing doesn't belong where we're trying to put it. So, for example, if we were to go back historically and look at how, let me step back, everybody that's sitting up here with me currently, or just about everybody, knows very clearly on the record that the city council should adopt Robert rules, not this modified, whatever we're calling it. Years ago, say prior to 2000, that's what city councils did. They adopted Robert's rules, they followed the charter, they followed code. Mid 2000s, maybe early 2000s, the administrator at the time wanted to create what you have before you, which is a document that really is more about an onboarding document for counselors as they come and go, not rules, orders of business, as we're calling it. If you really break it down, go through the document, there's only a few areas that really hit upon or touch upon how we operate. The rest is really redundant or copy and paste from other areas. And again, it's a good tool for counselors new to follow, but as you read through it, I don't know about the rest of you, but I've done it and I look at it and I can't help but feel that it's a really bad read. It's all over the place and it's just because it's a document that's been hodgepodgey together for many years. And what has occurred is that code has changed, charter has changed, this document hasn't changed, and vice versa. So while I think it's, you know, clear, as I've stated, I think one of the things I like to see come out of this is an official adoption of Robert rules. Much of what, what else is in there, I don't really see why, like, everything that Counselor Hatch has suggested, I'm totally on board with it. I think it's great. You and I have had those conversations. But what we're trying to do is rewrite code or charter through Robert's or through the Rules of Order of Business. And this is why we've had these conflicts in the past where somebody's following rules and order of business, I'm following charter and code. So as I've stated, back when we were looking at doing charter change, when we were talking about qualifications or whatnot of the boards, I had wanted to make it a year residency requirement, and I stated at that time, okay, I'll give that here and we'll address it through code. And that is, again, a longstanding goal of mine, and I would incorporate what you've suggested into the actual code, because this is really just policy, meaning each and every single council that comes before us can modify it, whereas code has that three meeting process. It's more in depth. I think it's better for the organization. So I'm not saying this isn't a valid process. I just, again, having spent many hours with this and myself recognizing, oh, you know, this could be cleaned up. It doesn't belong cleaned up here. It belongs cleaned up in code or charter in other instances. So I wanted to get that out there before we went down the rabbit hole too far. Thank you.
Yep, and I completely agree with you. And, but I, this is, you know, unfortunately, this is part of the requirement that we have to go through with the new council. And I know that the four years that I've been on, there's always been a change here or there, but it's never been looked at. And there are a lot of discrepancies between the rules in order, the charter, the code. And like you said, exactly, I know a couple of councils that went by this and then ended up having the wrong information or having it misunderstood because this never matched the charter or the code. Traditionally, it's only been whatever the mayor wants to change on the scheduling or the, or meetings versus a full review.
Well, I, I want to just jump in here and I appreciate the historical perspective, I really do, and not having been a part of that. And now I'm thinking that to get to your objective, which I think is worth pursuing, perhaps in the interim, we try to clean this up as best we can, get it as consistent as possible with, with the charter and the code. But as a follow-up step, try to migrate this document back to a little bit more tighter connection to the code. And I wanted to start this comment by agreeing as well. I've been sitting here for whatever, two and a half years. I don't know what the modified Robert's Rules of Order is. It's almost like an open-ended opportunity to do what you feel like doing.
That's.
And I dislike that. I'm a person who likes to have rules and I'm a person who likes to follow rules and I want clarity and consistency. And so I would go on record in this forum supporting Counselor Johnson's comment about eliminating this modified concept and just go strictly to, to Robert's Rules of Order, making it clear, not only for us, but for the general public. You know, I think sometimes they sit there and they wonder, how did, how did we actually do this? So I hear what you're saying. I want to respectfully acknowledge it. And maybe what we can do, if I might suggest, is continue to go through this document and see what we can do to clean it up. And then as an additional step, maybe at some later date, try to pull the two pieces together.
Just to add on to that, I have some comments about Robert's Rules of Order later. I note there's actually a conflict on page 19. We adopt a modified version of Robert's Rules of Orders, which I think we lay out below it. But on page 34, we adopt Robert's Rules of Order unmodified. So we actually adopt both in different parts of this document, which probably should be clarified. But more, I think best practice, and I think we've started to do it in some of our policies as a city, is to make references to other places where the document exists rather than reiterating them in a second document. And that way, they can't fall out of alignment.
Right.
You know, for example, on our, you know, I was going to make this comment later here too, about our committees, there's no need to list them all here when they are also in code. We should just reference the code where they're referenced, right? And then say, you know, city committees can be found here, mayor's ad hoc committees can be found here. And maybe even as we go through this today, we can point out those sections where we think the information exists in charter or exists in code. And then part of this process can be identifying those sections that can be removed and supplemented by reference to the appropriate part of charter or code.
I would, I would agree, and that's what I would advocate for, is we just reference it. Because as we've seen, if you read some of, you know, the language, and then you actually go and look at code, it's been amended, so it's no longer germane, you know? So that's how I view this. It's really simplifying this and then having a lot of the information in there for new counselors. This is how you interact with staff, everything that's there. But, you know, when we start going into the areas of, something I support, something I've always been on the record that we should have public comment at all of our committees or, but doing it through our rules of business makes no sense to me, to be honest. It belongs in code that requires them to have it. Otherwise, who are we to say what that board or commission does? That's how I view it. I mean, if I was on that board or commission, I'd probably argue against it or perhaps not, but you know what I'm saying? It's like, it needs to be in the code that we set for them, not in our rules of business, where, again, we may change on a whim, or a council may change on a whim.
It's also our rules of business.
Right. Again, that's what I'm saying. It's our rules. It's how we interact, not how other boards and commissions interact. So, and then of course, you know, you have things that I've always been a strong supporter of. I think it was Ms. Archer that pointed out, there's a requirement in our rules and order of business that only, or an individual can only serve on one board or commission. Yet, when you look at the board and commissions, you see a lot of carryover of the same people. And I understand oftentimes, it might be hard to find people, but it also goes against the idea of getting people involved when it's the same faces. So that's, that's actually something I'd like to see retained, but I'd like to see it formulated through code or, or a specific policy from council on how we, you know, make these determinations with appointments.
I actually had that confusion right at the title of this document. City of Saco Rules and Order of Business, parentheses, Procedures Manual for Council Members. So it was unclear to me, is this council rules in order of business? Is this the city's rules in order of business? And if so, then what's the parenthetical needed for? So I actually think that confusion originates right at the title of the document.
So I just want to bring this forward. We don't typically do this, but if we want to delve deep, do we want to create a committee of the council? A small subcommittee to actually delve deep, make notes, present to the council? I mean, we could do this in workshop setting, but the most effective, I almost feel, is a working group. This is, this is great for conversations, but it's not really a working group.
Oh, and that's, that's why we, you know, if that comes out and that seems to be.
Welcome the opportunity, as you know, Counselor Archer.
Yeah.
And do that and look at it more closely.
And I'm also in agreement with the Robert's Rules, because I don't, the point in time doesn't matter, but at past administration, we were given guidance by legal that the council can kind of change the rules as they go. And I was operating under rules of order and I was the minority opinion. And it was shut down being the minority opinion, saying we're going to follow Robert's, the modified version. And then probably about seven months later, the same certain, different context, but same circumstance popped up, but it was the majority opinion, so they allowed it.
Right.
So I, that's why we kind of really need Robert's Rules, because it can create that clarity, it can create consistency in decision-making, having the vagueness of modified rules. Like you, if you type in modified Robert's Rules into the internet and try to find a book, I guarantee you don't find one. It doesn't exist. So that's why I've always been a supporter, not necessarily to get, play legal games with how that stuff works, but it creates a sense of consistency in order, in which way, in which we operate. So that's why I've always been a big fan. It gets rid of that ambiguity. I still didn't even say it right, but you know what I meant.
We understood.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm, I'm very much somebody that needs to understand what my role is. And so from, you know, the day I got sworn in, my understanding at that time was Robert's Rules. So I took the time to, again, not understand four hundred-plus pages, but the basis of it and always applied it. Soon thereafter, it's kind of just been this wishy-wash thing, and I'm sitting there going, well, Robert's Rules says this. And I don't expect anybody to know it by, you know, heart. But when you have an instance that you, hey, we don't know what to do, you just refer to the book. I mean, I got a copy from the city hall when I first was sworn in. I brought it to every meeting. Now I know, you know, how it operates. But again, you and I both have seen it basically be used against us or, or legal opinions come out and go, oh, well, you know, the legal opinion is this. Well, I don't want a legal opinion. I want to know what the rules are and we'll all play by them. So again, I think you just adopt that as many councils used to do.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm trying to, because this is a great conversation, but at the same time, I feel like we've kind of gotten into this little rut about this section here. When I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember, at the beginning of this conversation, you were talking about goal-setting as a policy. And we kind of got off into this thing about the code, everything, which is a great conversation, but if we're going down and talking about policy, you were looking for feedback in terms of how the council should go and terms of policy and goal-setting at the beginning of the council. Is that correct?
No, I was actually, I was going to start the document and just go through.
Yeah.
But as Counsel Johnson pointed out, there's more to the document than us just changing some lines or adding something.
Yeah.
Which has now sparked the whole conversation. The goal-setting was basically how our council vision is laid out and how we interpreted it.
Yeah. Well, the reason I want to get back to that was because that's a valid conversation too, though, because, as I said, I've been here as long as you have, though. It's one of those things where at the beginning of every council, we do have our goal, our policy, our goal-setting for such as, such as it is. But I've always told folks in the public that as a body, we are by nature, are almost relatively reactionary, though, in the sense that staff runs the city on a day-to-day basis. They often bring us items that are attention. And the idea that we set these goals at the beginning of the year, that this is going to be our priorities in terms of importance, has, it's always been a good idea. And if we were a Monday through Friday, nine-to-five legislative body or something, I suppose it would make some sense. But considering how this government is structured, how any manager, council government is structured, it's, it's a good idea, but it never really seems to match the day-to-day, or in our case, when we, when we're here, week-to-week reality of our governing ability. Because anytime that we hear, it's whatever priorities that are presented through either circumstance, statute, the year in terms of what we have to do in terms of our budgeting, our reporting, certainly our budget season, all these things, though. And they don't ever, there never seemed to be an opportunity for us to sort of really match up what we say are our priorities at the beginning of the year with what we actually do. And it's, I guess that's a roundabout way of saying, I'm not going to go and say it's a complete waste of time. I'm just saying is, is, the value of the document itself, I have always had questions about. I know, I know he's not here, but former Councilor Purdy certainly looked at it and be like, why are we spending so much time on something where we don't actually reutilize it on a day-to-day basis? And this gets into Councilor Johnston's comments about policy versus code, in terms of, you know, how much, how much do we actually have to go into this document every year when we actually really don't make any hay out of it? So if this, again, if this is something that we could clean up, modify, simplify, I would be in favor of that, because like I said, it doesn't seem to really, you know, doesn't seem to be particularly useful. I mean, it's one of those things, I mean, there's a big difference between the comprehensive plan, which is, comes down on from us from Augusta, says you have to have this plan, and we can use that to, you know, set our goals for a city. Obviously, our zoning, which is law, which allows us to organize a city, those are laws. Our goal-setting, it's, I'm questioning its usefulness. And I say that as somebody who likes to tell people generally what you stand for, but at the same time, we all, you know, we have seven, eight, if you count you, different political opinions about what we need to do as a city, but you can have all the political opinions in the world you want, though. They often don't jive with what's actually presented to us and how we perform, and we perform our decisions. That's why I question the value of, you know, the numbering of our priorities when they never seem to match what we do. End of speech.
So do we think, is this the type of document that we are now possibly maybe splitting it up and making two separate, so that one is specifically our day-to-day roles and rules as a council, how the meetings are run, what our schedules are, then having a separate section or a separate document that specifically deals with Robert's Rules, the more governmental side of it? Is it, I mean?
Want to hear from the, do you want to hear from the city administrator? I don't know on this particular issue, if I should, if I should weigh in. I, this is.
Please weigh in.
One thing I would have to say is, I think that Councilor Berman had it spot-on, where it's really two things that, just right in the, the Rules and Order of Business, and then you have Procedure Manual for Council Members. It's two things. So I quickly went online and looked at another group, another city council rules and order. And getting to what the mayor said, and maybe going to what Deputy Mayor talked about, you're very specific for rules. So you have, you actually number it, Rule Number One, Rule Number Two. So new Rule Number One might be meeting nights, Rule Number Two may be special meetings, and they're all articulated. And then, you know, you go on to Rule Number Three, Workshops. So you're really talking about the actual mechanics of the meetings, not all the, you know, procedures and policy, as was described by Councilor Gunn. So you go right through there. And in the rules, so Rule Number X, or whatever it is, the city council shall follow the Robert's Rules of Order. And it goes on, chairing of the meetings, order of business, those are things. Rule Number Eight, consideration of motions, you know, Rule Nine, written motions, those types of things that actually set out how you mechanically run the city council meetings. And then going into, if you wanted to, and I think the mayor is correct, you almost could set up two, you know, you'd have a Procedures Manual or something you would call Policy Manual, probably would be more appropriate, and get into what Councilor Gunn was talking about, and maybe even what Councilor Hatch has even been talking about. But for Rules and Order, it should really be, and I could pick any one of these here, it says, you know, you have adjournment, disposition of motions, motion, you know, motions during debate, those types of things. And you, and you order them, not in this particular, but it's Rule Number One through Rule Number Twenty-Five. And you do like, you can do a, an ability to get right to that rule and speak to the rule of how the mechanics of you are working in the meeting setting. That's, so I have to say that it probably is two documents. And, but now I'll keep quiet.
No, 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 we want your input as well.
Madam.
Councilor Gunn, then Councilor Johnson.
Just as a quick follow-up, and I think this is going to be on, similar to what Councilor Johnson was talking about, would those rules in order be essentially policy, where the council could change them, in our case, once a year, because we have a legally new council every year? Or would that be something that we would codify and then keep the, sort of the how-to-do-your-job section on the side? That's something that we play around with, though, to sort of respond to, I suppose, the different ways you could do your job, though, or do we codify the first part as code as opposed to policy? I mean, as best practices, I mean, you've been doing this for a while, we're in a couple cities. What would you recommend?
Well, what I would say is, the council wants to have the flexibility of being able to change its rules in order when they feel is necessary.
And Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules of Order allows you to set aside the rules. It's a rule that allows you to set aside the rules.
So you don't have to codify it.
But it's all done on an individual basis in the moment, and the body decides, not a person. The body decides, do we set aside the rule or not?
You could, on the Robert's Rules, you can suspend the rules. And when you suspend the rules, you basically can say, for example, if you have somebody in the audience, and it's, you know, the last thing on the item, and you know that they have to get home for the kids or whatever, you can say, Your Honor, may I suspend the rules to bring up item number seven? So, and then the council would then vote on suspension of the rules, you bring that forward. This document is more of a, you know, kind of a mix of things, whereas the Rules and Order that I've always seen are very specific, Rule Number One, Rule Number Two. I mean, you can go right through different ones, you know, the interruption of a speaking member, you know, those types of things, that can just be articulated. And you can keep them to maybe forty rules or whatever, but if there's a need come up, as a city council views something, you know, for example, the three-minute rule, that can be amended. Or you can suspend the rules at any time you want. You could suspend the rules, let's say there's an issue that you really want to hear from everybody beyond the three minutes. The city council can suspend its rules and allow for a longer period of time. So those are some of the things. But I, I think these are two documents, and they're probably necessary documents, but the document that I think you really want to get out of the way, to make sure your, your actual mechanics of your meeting run smoothly, is your Rules and Order. And this is more an operations manual, so.
And yes, that gets back to what I originally was stating. I mean, I view this, I don't know when it particularly or precisely got merged, but when you, you look at the first, you know, you go through the table of contents, pretty much all of them are a, as I describe it, an onboarding for councilors. This is how the City of Saco government works, this is your role, whatever, whatever, whatever. And then you get to the appendices, and that's where you see the resolution adopting city council rules, which is two pages, and it pretty much is adopting Robert's Rules. So, like I said, prior to this, a new council just adopted Robert's Rules, or they created their own, you know, rules, as the city administrator described. But past practice has always been to just adopt Robert's Rules, because it does have so much leeway, where you can change it on the fly if you don't like the rules. But like I said, here we are, taking this, and we've done it several times in the past, where it's like, we're trying to bring about change somewhere else that we care about, not recognizing that that has its own set of rules, whether it's in code or charter, and we're changing it under our rules and order of business, when to me, it's just we adopt Robert's Rules. If we want to change or update some of the language for, you know, this council procedural manual, I guess you could call it, or something. I mean, I think it's a good asset. I'm sure, you know, every new counselor that comes on would appreciate, okay, this is what's expected of me. But it really has very little to do with how we operate or really the city. So I'm not saying, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater, but I feel like they need to be separated out. We adopt whatever rules we want and make edits to this at a later date, or, or, you know, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of outdated language. We have a Freedom of Access Law from 2011, that's outdated. You have Code of Ethics, which doesn't even recognize the fact that we've actually, or a city council has adopted a Code of Ethics. Right here, it's just using ICMA's Code of Ethics. So that's a good place to incorporate, or at least, again, send, create a link to, you know, future councils to say, hey, this is the code, read this. So, thanks.
I mean, this is a workshop, so this is the appropriate place to be having these discussions. And I think there is some still value, still, there is still some value in going through this document. And I favor a two-document approach, a clear Rules of Order and a separate, we might call it a policy manual for council, or a policy manual for elected officials and commissions. I think those should be separate. I think they should refer to code and charter as appropriate. But I do think there's still some value in going through this and seeing what should be kept, what should be thrown away, what comments we have as we start to create these two different documents. And maybe as, as we go through that discussion, the way to get to those two documents will become more clear.
I'm open to that. I have thoughts, I've made my own notes on mine, that I'd like to get out at one point, when it's appropriate. I was thinking, work down the document.
Yep. With that being said, probably, I'm wondering if easier way, instead of going page by page, or section by section, would be down the road by counselor? And then if you have any, throw them out, or, and then, and then after this, then we can, City Administrator Rehanko and I, and possibly Emily, then we can work together and see what the best plan of action and how we can get the separated, and then brought back. But if we can get some of the major updates done tonight, get a redline version, and then we can work throughout the, I don't know, you know, next couple of months, six months, a year, on kind of cleaning it up and creating two separate possible documents, or at least two different sections, very specific sections? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, I think that's an approach we can.
Okay, so why don't we start with Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you. All right. So again, some of these are more just for context, to develop further conversations. I didn't even like write in legalese, because I wanted it to be amended, but I just want to get out there. We already talked about Robert's Rules, but we actually cite it in our document, like page three eighty-two. I'm going to move forward on that. But when we talk, look at Appointment of Advisory Bodies, I'd also like to see resumes included. Because when you look at Item E, Appointment Advisory Bodies, that they must be well-qualified, responsible and willing citizens. Well, how do we know if it's just?
Can you give us the section, or if there's?
Yeah, give me one, Section Three, and then down to E, which is the bottom of, sorry, page five, it looks like. And then Section One, where it talks about Appointment Advisory Bodies. Again, these are our appointments that, I'm just asking that a resume is provided. Not always. I've seen them in the past, but I've also not seen any, very limited information, sometimes just the application itself. It's hard to identify well-qualified, responsible and willing. And Number Two, where we have to look at qualifications, I also like to see, to make it not just be residents, but eligible voters. Those are, I think that's, that's important, that they're an actual eligible voter, which just can be quickly signed off by the clerk, quite, very simple. I'm not asking to get barriers in the way. Section F, guess what? I've never had any training about emergency management. What does council do in the event of emergency? And it became clear in my mind after, luckily, fortunately, no, I don't believe anybody got hurt or killed during our storm here. I know property damage, I understand that. But what is our role? It's very vague. And I have a background as a Marine, so I, if an emergency happens, I'm going to be stepping up to my role, but if I don't know what it is, it makes it very vague. Again, I know we're not supposed to get into operations, but in emergencies, sometimes we have to. So maybe we're asked to go to certain meetings, like for FEMA or something like that, because we don't have enough staff or whatever. But the thing is, is no clarity. I don't know. So I'd like to at least look into that. Or we say that we have no role, just clarification. Keep scrolling. One of the things that just applied today, if you scroll down to, what is it, Support Provided to City Council.
Okay, do we want to take each one and get that answered, so that city clerk queues?
Oh, sure. Could I just add, with the emergency management, I agree, it's not clear at all what our role is, but historically speaking, we've had an EMA director, and city councilors and the mayor have historically just stayed out of it.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Technically, I mean, obviously, I mean, I can remember during the 2007 Patriot Day storm, I think it was Patriot Day storm, maybe it wasn't, maybe it was prior to that. I remember traveling down to Camp Ellis with my father, who was mayor at the time, and just saying, hey, how's everything going? Do you need anything? But certainly, they weren't expecting, you know, anything more than that.
No.
And I think to define something more than that probably is really overstepping.
Well, then we should probably get rid of it.
Our roles.
Because in the event of a real emergency, and we do not do anything, we can't just say, oh, we didn't know.
Or you have a counselor that's
This is proactive.
A go-getter, and they're like, I'm here to put out the fire. I think it needs to be clear for staff.
We either have no role, or it's defined.
Right.
Nate, can I ask you a question, just procedurally? Because you, I mean, if you were down there with your father when he was the mayor, did he have any, even if it was just a clerical role in declaring that there was an emergency, to sort of empower staff to actually do anything? Or was he there simply as we would be as like a citizen? Because procedurally, I actually had this discussion with previously, previous Mayor Doyle during the last Christmas storm, when there was, when Brian Keenrath was out of town. And there was a discussion, well, do we declare emergency to get the shelters open, because half the town didn't have power? And there was, I said to him, based on what I'm renaming, you could have, you could potentially have the power to say, there's an emergency. And of course, as the mayor, you have no control over it, just to declare it, to therefore empower staff to act. He disagreed with me on that level. And of course, this type of language existing here muddles it up, though, because if council is involved, that means by de facto the mayor is, because they chair the council. Do you recall what the situation was in terms of how your, how, what your, what the old man was up to when that happened?
I, to be honest, I think he was just down there to check out the scene. There's a state, and forgive me, I don't know off the top of my head, but there's.
But he didn't, he didn't have to actually call up the city administrator and say, I'm declaring an emergency, a city emergency, you go, you know?
Not during his time that I recall, but I think there's a state law that may have that provision that allows, because you, in order to get the federal aid and whatnot, you have to declare some kind of state of emergency. But certainly, he wasn't like, with the flag, leading the troops, so to speak.
Or like I said, just like, you know, click the button so staff has, is empowered to work.
I think it'd be useful to come back to this, is the point, right, to figure out what it is.
Say the least.
I do think it needs to be clarified, because, one, a new counselor could take that and be like, oh, okay, I have a role here. And it's like, well.
And again, to the point that before we were talking, at the end of this, what is our role? The council's role is described in the Emergency Management Regulation.
Right.
Everybody read the Emergency Management Regulation?
I've never seen it.
So is this something that we even need in here?
Yeah, useful to find out and excise it if it's not.
We've tasked certain department heads to deal with emergency management. I, in my book, anyway, I would look to them. They're the ones qualified to handle it. I'm assuming they all have training. I'm not about to be like, well, I'm down here because I'm a city counselor, and now I'm in charge. Take the seat.
If it's a policy emergency, we have the ability to act, you know, at the city level, though. But when it comes to actual life and death situations, you know, we're not.
The policy for it can be another discussion.
We ain't involved.
What we want right now is, can we, do we agree that maybe we should remove this out of the manual?
Something, some action needs to happen.
Or leave it as is for now.
Well, the reference is a state statute and Emergency Management Regulations. I would advise the city go back and look at what those are, and if we have any role, and if we do, clarify it. And if we don't, then excise it.
So leave as is, but make a note for future reference to follow up on.
Because the way I've interpreted it over the last seventh year now, is that there may be a time where we have to be a liaison. For example, if we have to be in the, the city has to be in the city, the city has to be at the county, and the city has to be at the state, we don't have enough bodies. One of us could be assigned as a liaison for those conversations, not to do anything, but those kinds. That's the only way I saw communications, was really, it was more just about communications.
Right. So maybe then, when we look at this again.
But that's it.
Or where we can expand on it a little bit more.
Even when you read F, it really doesn't make any comment about city councilors at all.
Doesn't tell you what to do.
It's describing the establishment of the Emergency Management Office. So perhaps this was added right around the time that they came up with the offices of, you know, Emergency Management, and they, I guess, wanted to spell it out clearly for councils at the time. I don't know, to be honest. They just, but it really, when you read it, it says nothing about our role. It's just addressing that there will be an office of Emergency Management.
Okay, so for document purposes tonight, we'll leave it as is, but make a note for additional clarification in any changes on the update, when we update. in any changes on the update, when we update. Okay.
Counselor Archer, I'll also raise something about section E. Do we want to have a general discussion about that? Or are we going to keep going down the line? How, how do you want to handle that?
Yep, we can go back. So I will say that for me personally, right now, I'm doing a lot of reappointments, but all of my new appointments, I am going to be adding either on the application itself or a separate, a separate piece with each applicant, giving a brief why. I don't know if that's something that should be written this way. We've had mayors that have done it in the past. We've had mayors that have not. For a while there, we weren't even getting the applications. I know when I first came on, it was, for some reason, there was some lag in the applications. We're not even included.
So, so one of the things that I just want to say about this section for me is, is this is an area, I think, where the mayor has great discretionary authority. And to me, it's one of the, actually, the, the few places where the mayor has real discretionary authority. You don't have a vote on council, right? You don't have a say in, in policy. You get to set the agenda. You get to bully pulpit. And you get to appoint the advisory bodies. And to me, that's a really important consequence of the elections. And so I want to really maintain, you know, the mayor's prerogative to, to shape those advisory committees. It's the meat and potatoes, we heard earlier, and that's really where the mayor has some real authority. I do know there's some discussion later on the, on the planning board, I assume that we'll get to, and about those appointments. But one of the things I'm less clear on is why that we're going to separate out the planning board and not beef up this section. If there are additional qualifications, or there are additional information needed, or additional information to go through, I'm, I'm not clear why we want to add it here and have it apply to all of our committees and commissions in line, consistent with making sure the mayor keeps that, that real authority to make those appointments. And, and so this is where I would look to make some of those changes, to, to the extent that we need to. And that way, it applies to all of our committees and commissions.
And that's how I've written this, that this is, the way I've always seen the resume need, I've always seen this as the check and balance to the gov, because it, the governor, sorry about that, unless you want to be one of it. The mayor's appointment is, this is the check and balance to those.
As a person who brought forward the issue relative, specifically to the planning board, my, my actual long-term intent was to make it a blanket provision. Because I, I do think that without, without taking the implied authority, you talked about, the mayor should have, and I agree with that. I think we have a duty to be appointing people to whatever boards and commissions with some knowledge of their skill sets and their ability to take those skill sets and apply them to the role that they're being asked to be appointed to. And I also think in fairness to these appointees, we should have some level of, 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 call it what you will, a job description, what are the responsibilities? And, and how much time will it take you to do that job appropriately? So that then, when they're volunteering for whatever board or commission, it's clear to them, what am I, what am I getting into here? And do I have the time and the abilities to serve in that role appropriately? And if not, maybe not that particular board, but there may be other boards that, that might, might interest them. So I, I think, I picked on the planning board, because it's, in my view, anyway, and I stated that in my documentation, I think it's probably the second most important decision-making board, second to the city council within the city governance. And we abdicate a full authority to these folks, who are all well-intentioned folks. I, don't get me wrong. I have nothing, nothing against anybody who serves on the planning board. But I do think that we, we owe it to them and we owe it to our citizens if we're going to abdicate all that authority to make, just to make sure that we've got people who have the bandwidth to handle the role. They understand what the role is and some of the requisite skills necessary to complete that. And I think if you put that out there, I actually suspect that that might actually open up opportunities for folks who, who might look at a plea for serving. It might enhance our ability to find folks, because they're going to be able to see exactly what the role is and, and maybe sit there and say, yeah, I, I could do that. I got the skills to do that. I, I, maybe it's time for me to step up. And so I, I didn't mean to isolate the planning board, but that for me was the, was sort of the, the most important one of the group. And we've, we, whatever we do there, I, I would wholeheartedly agree that we apply consistently across other boards and commissions. And now I'm questioning with Counselor Johnson's earlier comments, is whether or not those changes should be here or in the code. And I think it should be in the code.
With, with respects to your specifics to the planning board, I think it should be in code.
Yeah, absolutely.
The other things that you submitted as far as like a more thorough application.
Yeah, I agree.
Wholeheartedly agree that we need it. And it makes sense to have it here. I, I think that we, we need language that, that specifies that council, yes, the mayor may appoint, but council will receive those applications, because in the past, that hasn't always been the case. So we get a name, it's submitted, and you have no real way of making an informed decision as a counselor, whether you'll support that appointment. There's a, another thing I'd, I'd like to see the option for, and I think there's, there's language somewhat there today, but I'd like to see it more clarified, which is, I think, giving an opportunity for, for the, those under 18 youthful individuals to be a liaison in some of these boards, maybe not a voting member, but giving them that opportunity to see how government works, understand it better, and, and them being able to relay their feelings, whether it's the planning board, you know. What we're doing today is impacting future generations. So it's something that, for years, I, I felt would be beneficial, really. I, I know at the Parks and Rec, we usually have a, a youthful, I don't know what we're calling it, but liaison. But I think that across the boards, you know, would make sense. Again, maybe not a voting member, but at least give the mayor the opportunity to find a kid out there that is interested. I think that would do us wonders.
If we can get a kid, like a Thornton Academy student, to actually want to come to a five-hour planning board meeting, we should give them a nice seat and one of those sandwiches they give everybody else though, because that is someone who's going places, if they have the discipline. I don't know about you guys, when I was 15, though, I had a lot on my mind, and it certainly wasn't a planning board meeting.
No, me either.
So, okay, so there again, this is going to pull it back to the two different aspects of create, updating this document as is versus what we want to then take forward and look at it codes. So to Counselor Johnson's point, like Counselor Archer's planning board items, that should be more addressed under code. Counselor Archer looking at this as it reads as a update or as a newcomer tool? Is it written, is there anything you'd like to see added? Or do you feel that as a basic description of our advisory boards?
No, yeah, this is more about just more process.
Yeah.
Specific, well, and then need to be an eligible voter. Need that. So, I mean, these are more, these aren't, I think it's fine for, for training documents or something, that summaries are fine, but then there's certain things that just key has to be written down, so.
Yep. And then that's, but that's good for the discussion, because we can mark down items that we do want, we want to look at.
Yeah.
Specifically going forward.
Because I put this as a rule, because your appointment, the duty in the, is, it's a duty that we have to perform here at the Diaz. So how we operate, which would say, we require a resume, that's a rule. So for me, that is not policy per se. That is, we can't make a determination without it, like it's an expectation or something to that nature.
Yep.
And qualifications would obviously follow to that as well.
Okay, so as written for this, it looks okay?
Well, I guess I would like to see two documents come back. I would like to see that rules of order document come back and a policy document come back. And when we see this come back, if we want to beef up our appointment process, like if we want to see resumes, if we want to see statements of qualifications, if we want to add some information to be distributed to candidates about the workload of various committees, I think that should be included in this section of whatever that new document is that comes back. But I think this is, yeah, yeah, the description of the committees, I think, should stay in code. The requirements for a committee should stay in code, but how we make the appointment belongs in our policy manual. And I would like to see some of those updates in the version that comes back for voting on.
Yeah, I would agree, because again, when you read charter or, or code, it's ambiguous as far as what the requirements are. So it, it makes sense to have a policy that we, you know, would like, because it's kind of silent as is.
Yeah. And I think the suggestions have been a resume. I think the suggestions have been that applications come, come to us along with the appointments. And I think there's been some suggestion of a, a statement of the work that's required by the candidate and some acknowledgement that they understand what that is.
Okay.
Another item that I just wanted to first again, discussion at this point, section four, support provided to city council. This just happened to me today, is one of the things I'd like to see is our mail, not junk mail like Main Biz. Actually, I read the Main Biz, so if you're listening, you're not under junk mail. I do read it. But what I'm looking for is, I had an invite to an event and I did not get it. I would like the mail to be forwarded. I believe this can be done automatically through the postal service, that if it says Marshall Archer, this 110 Main Street, it just comes to my house. That way, I haven't missed it, because I have missed several invites because of, you show up and I'm like, oh, great, yeah, I'll make it. Oh, that was two weeks ago.
Saving it for the next week.
So, simple change, I'm just thinking, can we get them forwarded? Simple, if we can do it in turn, through the postal service, even better. If we can't, we just forward it like every other mail in the world.
Or the administrative, executive administrative assistant that sometimes scanned in mail for me also and emailed it to me. That works really well.
I'm okay with that too. I was just trying to see if it could be simple through the postal service.
Whatever's the most cost-effective, though.
Nothing's, nothing's simple with the postal service, so I, I agree. I had the same thing happen to me where it's like, oh, it's a little too late. But at the very least, just being, hey, you've got mail here, come and get it.
True.
Then it's on me.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Like, right now, I don't know what I get.
No.
So, but, yeah, I mean, obviously, email form works too.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, we can do that, okay.
Same section, so do we need to discuss that any further?
Yep, we're going to do it administratively. Don't need to add it to this.
Okay. Section F, iPads. I was just wondering, this should be done per term. For example, Counselor Johnston could have a 2014 iPad right now. As ring.
No longer works.
So I was just making a, thinking is like per three-year term, if it's reelection or if requested. So we're not always committing ourselves to buying iPads, but technology, three-year-old iPad is old in today's world. And now we have three-year terms. So, exactly, exactly. So whether it's by default or by request, I was just thinking, putting it under that section. Whether it goes into each document, I don't care. It's just, this is what I had to work with.
Just to let you know, we are replacing all the iPads.
Okay.
So I can talk to, I mean, does this have to be in the document?
No.
Not really, because you rely on your IT people to know that certain things aren't going to be serviced. So we're going to be rotating out all the iPads.
I would say the, the only reason this got added to this document is, again, this predates the iPad. We originally had to purchase them ourselves.
Oh, really?
So I think this was added at the time to clarify what compensation is, because charter is clear that we only get $1,200. And there were some out there that considered this an additional compensation.
Right.
So it was, you know, put into the document to clarify that this is, you know, because it is a perk, I guess. And I only use it for.
I think 2019, I think we were the first, 2019 was the first.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, that's.
And then since then, the language changed, because it, it became the property of you after, property of the counselor after one year. I don't know when the language changed.
Yep, okay.
I don't see it anymore, but.
The thing is that the residual value of your iPads in front of you are probably about $25 now, so.
So you'd like to keep it, basically.
So I would say, you know, I, this really is.
Administratively?
Really does not, yeah, you can handle it. And if anybody's having problems with their iPad, let us know and we'll fix it or get you a new one. That's, I think, the way you need to deal with it.
Couple of months ago, we, my email, all of a sudden, my Apple wasn't working, and they took it right over and fixed it for me.
Oh, I know they're here for us, but when I read it, I also think of the extremes. And I'm like, well, that could, Nate could have a iPad version two.
Probably does.
That's all I have on that one. Section five is financial matters. Section B, expenditure allowance. Again, we know that we are allowed to have expenses. That, that, that's not dictated by charter. One of the things I'd like to see, and maybe it's added into the, one, the budget should not be in council rules. It should be based on the budget. If you look at legislative budget and proportion for line item, it should never be written into a document. So that should be based on just the budget, not council rules. But I'd like to see the possibility of allowing, and to be most cost-efficient during tax time, allow each counselor and the mayor herself to add a letter into the tax document. A legislative update or something to that nature at their choice, where it just goes with the tax bills to the appropriate ward. I know the US, United States Postal Service can break it down. It can be done. The mayor would be able to address everything. If you put it in that, then you're not repaying for mail. I just think it is a cost-effective way for us to communicate with our constituents. And really, I mean, I don't know how we mail out tax bills, but add a letter. That's all I'm asking for consideration.
Okay.
And I don't, I'm just checking, but I think.
But as written, everything is okay, no corrections?
Yeah, that's just more of a, of a suggestion to add.
Yep.
And again, it can go into the council's budget as an expense. And it just allows us to communicate
Yep.
to ours, to our constituents. And we started doing it, I liked the first and third Monday and the second Monday being a workshop. Location during local emergency, if we can just add the Zoom, if that's an option. Just, I don't need really debate, these are just thoughts that are out there. So many pages. I just, I think I'm good to go though. Yes, I am. Thank you. I need some more.
Okay, Counselor Parks, did you have anything that you wanted to, or note, any inconsistencies or corrections?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions going through it for any clarification for you as a new counselor?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor again?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You all have received my correspondence where it was just, it was just, again, housekeeping detail about how this, you know, our, this rules and order business didn't reflect the charter change that we did a couple of years ago in terms of vacancy in the office of the mayor. And with the, right now, we don't, you know, we only have special elections if there's a certain amount of time, as opposed to having to have all the time. So it's generally just outdated language. That's why I suggested we kind of cut and paste whatever the actual charter lang. The actual charter language, just so, I mean, for, if, so new people, if they're going through it and they just want a quick shorthand of how things are, they're getting the actual, they're not getting conflicting information though, because again, that's one of the situations where, you know, the charter is the law and then our own code sometimes doesn't, you know, reflect it or reflects, reflects like 90% of it though, but enough of a variation that it always, you know, end up having a situation where everyone's walking around like, what, what do we do in this situation? So that was just a minor thing. And the other things, as we go down the list, I might have some comments on. But I did have an idea in terms of our meeting structure, in terms of, right now, we have our council comment at the end of the meeting. Now, of course, if you're here for a long meeting, invariably, you have a life, so you have things to do. So you might not want to stay here for the entire meeting. So sometimes, whether it's, I mean, if there's no public hearing, or if it's just a policy discussion, there's no opportunity for the public to actually hear what's on a counselor's mind until the end of the meeting. And right now, we have essentially, we have our report from our liaison appointments at the beginning, so we got that. That's okay. But we run in this situation, and I've noticed it since I've gotten here, and obviously, we are not set up to have a Q and A directly with the audience. The audience is here. We set the parameters outside of a public hearing of when and where people can speak, except when a public hearing, that is their right to speak. That is state law, that is state statute. We're following that. That being said, we've gone above and beyond by having public comment. However, and I can see how very frustrating this would be if you were, especially if you were coming to the council for the first you were coming to the council for the first time, didn't quite understand how things were, but even if you come here all the time, and you have an opinion about some sort of policy matter, and you present it to the council, you say your three minutes, and you sit down, we go through it all, and then, it's a vacuum, basically, we then just move on to other business, and if it, anything that anyone has said relates to the business that we're doing, that's great, but if it doesn't, if it doesn't, it just kind of sits out there. And I feel that's kind of, you know, you know, I feel that's unfortunate aspect of how this is set up, so, what I'm suggesting, and this, I'm just gonna throw this out there, is, instead of having just a liaison report as a counselor at the beginning, after public comment, we basically have liaison and council comment, and it can be, so, the idea being that, obviously, it's not give and take with a member of the public, but, if five members of the public come up with, and they have an idea about something, and it's not specifically addressed in our agenda for that evening, it would allow them to, allow any counselor to speak, basically, about the topic, and get some sense of, at least, so the people that are in the audience are like, where is at least my counselor, or where is this counselor, or where's, you know, where are they feeling about this issue? Because, I feel if they're just, people are getting up here and just talking, and we are not structurally set up, because we're not allowed to offer direct feedback, let alone, you know, until the end, even then, we're not even allowed to have direct feedback, it creates a situation where, I can imagine, anyone going home and be like, well, I got up there, no one said anything to me, they said it was against the rules, and they never got back to me, so why not even bother show up? So, if we're talking about transparency, trying to get people involved, trying to make it feel like they're, you know, part of something, I think having an open comment section, limited, after public comment, would allow, again, the public to get a better feel of how people are feeling before we start the debate, but at the same time, obviously, as counselors, we're not really supposed to tip our hat before we vote, but, we're talking about general policy, and I think we have the discipline to do that, and I think it would be more respectful of people's time if we had that at the beginning of the meeting, and of course, at the end of the meeting, we can still have comment, so when we go through the whole operation, you still want to talk, that's great, I think having something that, something at the, at the beginning of the meeting might be beneficial, especially to the public, so, just a thought.
Not a bad thought.
Thank you.
Again, just historical information, we didn't have a public comment, it was my first term that I advocated for the public comment, we added it, at the same time, I added the city council comment, so you could have some form of rebuttal, I think, I think at the time, and I'm speaking for prior counselors, the concern was that you kind of lose the meeting right as you start a meeting, you know, we don't see that so much now with certain speakers, but in the past, you had, you know, certain speakers that could get up and be very vocal, very loud, demanding answers from staff, who oftentimes didn't have an answer right there on the spot, so it was, you know, you get your opportunity, you come up, say your piece, hopefully, somebody gets back to you, whether it's city staff, or the administrator, or an individual counselor, and that's kind of how I've used it ever since, sometimes I use council comment, if I can remember, you know, to go back and address it, or I follow up with an email to individual people that had made a comment, but I do understand, or agree that oftentimes, there are people that's like, I said something and I didn't get anything, and that's a concern I have in general, we oftentimes get council, full council emails, well, I never know, did somebody take the lead on this, did somebody respond?
Yeah.
And more often than not, I've discovered, nobody responded.
Yeah.
You know, in the past, they used to respond to everything, but then it was discouraged, you know, it was legal opinion, was, we shouldn't be, you know, reply all and responding, even though I think that reply all is appropriate, because everybody should have the context of what just occurred, and then, we're not all going, oh, who responded? And I've seen it so much in the last five, six years, concerning to me, because I have it all the time now, where it's like, oh, I even find myself drafting a reply, and I go like, nope, I'm not gonna do that, because it's been pounded into me not to reply, so, and I don't know if this belongs here, but I do think that we need to have, if someone's gonna reply, at the very least, everybody should be, if it's the mayor, then we should know that, hey, I re, I mean, Madam Mayor, you did that recently with somebody, because that was one that was just going and going and going and going, and I wanted to jump in and reply, or try to figure it out, because it, I just lost sight of what the problem was, because it was just boom, 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 and, you know, I appreciate that, but, we need some kind of, I guess, policy going forward that, you know, will be informed that they got a response, whether it's from us or, or staff, because oftentimes, it's, you know, sent to council, reply all to council, which, I don't know if members of the public understand this, but, that email address goes to several different staff members.
I don't think they, I don't think they quite do.
I don't think they do either, which I've always kind of had an upset stomach over, because they're expecting it's just going to us, and they may be, you know, saying whatever that they didn't really want to go there, you know.
My point about, you know, again, leaving, giving us the option to at least speak at the beginning part of the meeting, yes, we've had counselors in the past, you know, that may, you know, get up and want to, you know, talk a little too much while we got business to get down to, but, again, to your earlier point about if we would adopt Roberts' rules, or even with the modified version that we're currently operating with, the mayor has wide discretion as the chair of the council to gavel people out of order, or to basically move people along in terms of their talking, so, I like to think that having something at the beginning, especially if it's a contentious issue, or if it's something that gets everybody out, it would allow the temperature to be taken out of the room a little bit by getting some feedback. Now, obviously, we have a responsibility when we communicate our policy positions to the public, especially if they're not particularly politically popular, I will use the Transportation Center situation as a clear one, since that's the one we've been getting council-related emails on, if we are in a situation where, before we even got talking about policy, we could say, well, you know, someone who obviously didn't know, well, this is how we came to this decision, or this is how staff presented it to us, just to give them some information, so they don't think we're just up here just passing random laws, something like that allows us to take the, you know, the heat off the room, but if, if it became a, you know, tit for tat type of situation, mayor has the ability to say, alright, we're done with this right now, you want to talk more about it later, that's fine, though, and so, I think the structures in place that we have, adding as a, whether you want to do policy or code, we don't need to get into that debate for every little section here, because we can just talk about what we're talking about, then we can say, policy or code, we'll get to that later, whether it is policy or code, having something at the beginning, as I said, might help the situation, as I said, I threw it out there, and so I said, you know, you have it as, you know, liaison appointment, I got nothing for liaison, but I do want to say about this, and, you know, we expect you to at least...
Well, it could be something as simple as just taking the council discussion and comment and moving it up the agenda, we can still leave it as it is, which is an opportunity for counselors to talk about anything, send out a thank you, or change, or an upcoming meeting.
That's right, that would solve it.
It would engender more general top discussion, because if you think about it, at the end of the night, yeah, it gets it out of the way, so the meeting flows, but at the end of the night, you know, hey, you know, we got a pie in the oven at home, and we want to get home, though, so, I, how many times have you, at the end of the meeting, really wanted to say something, but you're reading the body language, you're like, it's the middle of winter, we're all cold, we all want to go home, no one wants to be that guy or girl, so having at the beginning, where we all have that investment, and we're all got our coffee ready, might be beneficial, but like I said, to Nate's point, though, you don't want to get bogged down, you know, in, you know, about an hour of speech making before we even get to just the first, you know, consent items, though, so, again, that's why I threw it out there, just to see how people feel.
And like I said, it's not, it's not a bad idea, I guess, from my perspective, I've kind of always viewed that as a possibility, it kind of depends on who's in the role of the mayor or the, or the chair at the time, but, specific to like, say, a public hearing, it's always been, this isn't a back and forth, but the public comment, I've always viewed as, this is my comment, if they have a question, and oftentimes, we see them not get, particularly if you have the answer, one of the counselors, I don't, I see no reason why one of us can't say, hey, Madam Mayor, can I address that, and be on that individual to say yes or no, you know, so, I don't know if you need a specific change, it's just a better understanding of how we operate.
Well, let me ask you something here, and this is again a rhetorical question, because I always sit here, feel like I'm boxed in by the rules, and when, especially when people like, you know, especially if they get up there and you can see that look on their eye, they're like, why isn't someone answering me? And I want to say like, you know, I want to go point of order, though, but at the same time, I'm thinking, I'm trying to think in my mind, would having Roberts' rules as a proper thing, give me the ability to say, hey, let me be the one to take the, you know, if one of us knows that we can take the temperature out of the room, I like to know that we can take advantage of that moment, because otherwise, I'm just sitting there with, on my hands, hoping this thing doesn't fall apart, hoping that the mayor, whoever it is, takes charge.
I would, again, strong support of Roberts' rules for that very reason, you can rise to the point of order and make whatever, you know, again, you got to go through the chair, and if the chair says no, you can overrule the chair by the body, but I don't really anticipate that happening, but I understand where you're coming from, you felt boxed in, and, again, I've always viewed it, that if one of us wanted to address it, or the mayor themselves wanted to address a member of the public during public comment, we really should, and we've kind of boxed ourselves in when it's appropriate. Now, allowing like a rebuttal, like an actual on-the-agenda rebuttal period, I just fear that it then kind of gives a, an expectation to certain members of the public that might be like, well, you're, you have to answer me.
Yeah.
Right, and so that, I think, was a concern years ago, and, I kind of like how it is, but, you know, since we're in this free-flowing conversation, like I said, I would certainly never restrict anybody, a fellow counselor that has a comment from, you know, from the public, from addressing them, obviously...
We always make it very, and mayor always make it very clear, it's like, just to be clear, counselor has an opinion at this point, they're addressing me and not the public, because it isn't back and forth, though, I mean, you put in that one little thing, they're, they may not, they might realize, oh, person is not allowed to actually talk to me directly, you know, in the meeting, though, I think that would, again, would educate the public and actually allow for a little bit more of a free-flowing, so, there are technically ways of, you know, encourage it without getting, you know, off the rails, though, but, I'm sorry, you were...
We have, we have history of certain applicants trying to talk to us, in which the body will talk back to that, we've done that before. The, and the other point I have was, the original point was, we're also a legislative body, and when you look at consistency, whether you're the city council, the state, the county, or the feds, that is called testimony, we just, we don't call it, we don't call it testimony, but it's effectively testimony, when you have back and forth between a legislative body and anybody who wants to speak, that's called a hearing. So, I mean, we're consistent in that fact, that we operate just like every other body, legislative bodies, that we call it public comment, but it's testimony time, so, and in testimony, if you don't get that, it's a one way to inform the council. So I just wanted to put that out there, too, is that, yes, the norm is, it is, it can be seen your way, optically, it can be seen like, well, I told you, and it is a weird, awkward conversation, hi, how you doing, this is my concern, and then, goodbye, I mean, that's visually, optically, what it looks like, but, that's, the point of it, is to give us information, so, and, as Counselor Johnson stated, is, what happens when we don't respond? And they stand there, and then we put that into the chair's hand, into the chair's hands of how to handle that, when we're not required to respond, so, it could get strange. I do kind of like it, though, so I want to admit that, there's, there's some good points to it, but I also like council discussion after the city administrator, because a lot of times, that report can answer some of my questions, which is effective for me, it's more efficient, plus, it allows me to take the actions of the day, if I do want to contribute, I can take the actions of the day and do it there, foreclosure, rebuttal, whatever terminology you want to use, so, I mean, yeah, I mean, I see the reason for the discussion, I guess. Still thinking on it.
Okay, so, do you want to, consensus would be, do we leave this as is now, and then maybe some more discussion, and then we can always update the agenda if we need to, if we come up with a, or if somebody, because I do agree with Marshall in the fact of having, again, possibly, maybe now creating two, or keeping council in discussion where it is at the end, for more general, what happened at the meeting over the night, then having something that, and then maybe research.
Perhaps in the public comment section, you could add a sentence that counselors are welcome to address or answer questions as they arise.
And we would need to, are we allowed to do that? We would need to follow.
I think these, I think these are just our procedures, I think, I think the mayor could decide to add that if you choose.
So, at any given point, I mean, all I gotta do is raise my hand, if you address me, I have the floor, so, if we make a consensus that it's okay during, like, right after a public comment...
After a public comment, I could...
If someone raises their hand during a public comment, it's very likely to rebut to an individual's comment, and all it is, is a hand raise, and you're not...
Yep.
I think you have that authority, and you could even add a sentence about that in the public comment section if you want to.
I'm okay with that, if everybody feels that that would be a beneficial change.
As I said, you have full control over it, though, so I don't see it going off the rails, at least in theory, though, I mean, like I said, we could try it out, though, but I mean, the reason we moved comment to the end was, you know, because it didn't work out, so, you know, again, I'm not married to one thing or the other, I just threw it out there as some, as a sort of a happy medium between having the public, you know, feel like they're a little bit more engaged, but also, but not going all the way to having sort of, you know, public comment, and, I mean, I have my opinions about, you know, public comment in all the committees and boards, but I think this is...
So, Marshall, but, basically, could we add a line to the Order of Business six under the public comment, that basically states, mayor has the authority to recognize counsel for discussion or comment, I don't know what the best wording would be, but... Okay, yep, so that would just be adding that line, and then giving the authority of the mayor to acknowledge counsel.
Can I just ask a question? When you guys mentioned that, and we discussed how the meetings run, for somebody coming in that has an issue that's pressing, for them, when they sign in in the back and say, you know, they have an issue they're bringing up, so you can call them, if we had a little paragraph or something that described what the interaction would be, just to give them an expectation, so if somebody doesn't respond right away, to know to wait around, the counselors may respond, or however you choose to do it, but just to set the expectation.
At the top of the signup sheet, this is the way public comment works.
Yep.
That'd be really helpful.
That's a, that's a good idea, that's a very good idea.
Along those same lines, when we're talking about the clear distinction, or what should be a clear distinction between public comment and public hearings, we've seen far too often people get up, and again, it's their right if they want to, you know, make their comment at public comment, but if they want it recorded into the actual record, as part of that public hearing, it should be done during the public hearing for the item that they're there to speak about. For many years, it's been, you know, ah, get up here and get it out of the way, I guess, but, but for the record, it should be part of that public hearing.
Multiple mayors say, hey, this might be better for the...
Yeah, and it's, it's been painful for me over here going, oh, you need to wait until the public hearing for it.
If someone's trying to find the information in the past, no one goes to public comment.
That's my point, I'm all about the historical record.
It is a document, it is something we can find in the minutes, but it's not where people, researchers don't research for random.
It just needs to be clear to them, the speaker, that, hey, I'm here for the public hearing, I want to put it with a public hearing, so, you know, that's where, and again, for us, or future generations looking back, you're able to find comments where they belong instead of all over the place.
Yep. Councilor Gunn, any additional changes or corrections?
Not at the moment, though, if, as we go down the list, I might have some opinions, but I'm not going to hold up the, the situation.
Yeah, no, yeah, because right now, again, you know, trying to, we're adding, what we're changing, anything that might need to be aligned with the charter. Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and my hope for my comments is that they trigger some additional review in certain places, especially in light of maybe creating these two documents, and I trust you and the city administrator, and the city clerk, or maybe a working group to help wordsmith some of these things, I'm not intending to make line item changes here, and some of them I've already spoken about, I think the title is confusing, I'd be curious who this document applies to and what it's really for, it doesn't seem like it's the City of Saco Rules and Order Business, it seems like it's the Council Rules and Order Business, and I think those should be two separate things. If I then go to page five, section E, Appointment of Advisory Bodies, we've already spoken about this also, I think some of the bolstering or beefing up that Counselor Hatch has proposed may be better suited here than it would be specifically for the planning board, and I would enjoy some discussion around that in a future meeting, I like the suggestion of CVs, I like the suggestion of putting some expectations for the members there. I had some confusion about the council role in disaster also, if I have a role, somebody should tell me. On page seven, now we're on item 4B, Interference With the Administration, I don't think this section belongs here, this is support provided... This is support provided to city council, talks about staff support, it talks about email, it talks about iPads, and then it limits us in how we interface with the administration. This is really restrictions for how we engage with the administration, and the fact that we should do so through the city administrator, except for purposes of inquiries. And this, to me, seems to be from the charter of governing our conduct. It's not really support provided to city council, so I believe this section should be pulled out and placed somewhere else. I don't think it should be buried between staff and email. Just a note, I know that the mayor and council compensation can't be changed during, while we're seated. That compensation has been fixed for a long time. Now, we're on page nine, five A. I think that at some point, we should review city council and particularly mayoral salary. I continue to believe I lose money serving on city council.
I'm paying fourteen cents per hour.
I think my phone bill and gas bill alone cost more than we're reimbursed for. Just some typographical stuff on page sixteen, the numbering goes wonky, it's seven and then nine, I think that should be a letter, not a number, probably A. And then X placing it as an agenda should probably be B. Page nineteen, section E, General Procedures. This, we've had a lot of discussion around this already. By resolution, the city council has adopted a modified version of Roberts Rules of Order. We've discussed this several times in this meeting and previously. I think what this is trying to say is that the modified version of Roberts Rules of Orders follow, and that's the things that follow that paragraph, but it's actually not clear the way it's written. It could be referring to something else. So, I think if we are going to have a modified version of Roberts Rules of Orders, and that is what we're describing next, we should clarify that. And if we're abandoning the modified version and going back to the published version, then we should put it by reference there, and we should also say either the most current version of Roberts Rules of Orders, or whatever version it is that we are following, they do change sometimes. I would also note that this current lack of clarity has come up several times. One common example is, I think we have the general belief that once a motion fails, we can't bring it up again in the same council. That is not written in here anywhere. Right? And so, we've been following these dogmas, as, because they're from Roberts Rules, they are not currently in our modified version, and areas like that have come up and been really important. And so, I think we really need to clarify, are these the rules we're following? Are we following Roberts Rules more generally when it's convenient? I think it's really a problem, especially because this is inconsistent. You know, page thirty-four, section E, right, says we adopt Roberts Rules, and so I think we really need to bring some clarity on those things. I don't think I have other comments then until page thirty-four, where again, it says Roberts Rules will be the parliamentary procedure for the council. Is it Roberts Rules? Is it the modified version? We need some consistency. On the next page, that's page thirty-five, now we have an Order of Precedents of Motions. This is confusing here, because on page nineteen, we adopted a modified version of Roberts Rules, and on page thirty-four, we adopted Roberts Rules, and now here, we're having an Order of Precedents of Motions. So, we actually have now three places where we talk about how the motion, the meetings should be run, that aren't quite consistent with each other. So, I just think those really need to be brought into line.
And again, that would be something that we, based on the split, would be able to, and once we get the clarification...
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't want to talk about which one it should be right now necessarily. I trust you, I trust the administrator, I trust whoever is dealing with this to come up with the right way, but we just need one way, I think, not several different ways. And I think the Order of Precedents would be covered by Roberts Rules if we choose to adopt that. Appendix B, Boards and Committees, these are just wrong.
Yeah.
So, so...
I have that, rewrite the whole section.
Yeah, and I think it should be done by reference to city code. We also list the boards and committees there, both the ad hoc ones and the standing ones, but these really are just wrong, and there are committees that exist that aren't mentioned, there are other things. So, I don't even know if this needs to be here, but if it does, they're just wrong. And, for example, the BPAC isn't mentioned, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee isn't mentioned, they're just, they're missing committees, they're extra committees. It's just not correct. So, those are, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, so, Michelle, my suggestion for appendix B would, yeah, just go through with what we've got on the sheet as our approved boards and committees, and that whole section kind of needs to...
I think it just should just reference, boards and committees can be found in city code on these, in these sections.
Yep. Something to that as well.
Yeah, I think there should, there should just be an omission here, and only a reference.
Yeah, because we've got some that Saco Main Street's not on there, but the Dyer Library is, but it's not under ad hoc, it's long spots.
So many, yeah, that's what I'm saying. But it's up to date in the code, and so let's just, you know, let's just reference that.
Yep.
And that consists of my comments.
All right. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I have a bunch of, I've gone through this PDF and made some notes, more of writing clarity, so I'm just going to send that to, I've sent it to you already, city administrator Bohenko, I'll send it to you so you can review. I don't necessarily have to make those changes, which is suggested language adjustments for clarity. Specifically, I just want to go on record as supporting the elimination of this nebulous modified Roberts Rules of Order. I think we need to just get to Roberts Rules and be done with it. I would like to see, based on tonight's conversation, the qualifications of the boards and commissions. We've got to move that stuff to code. So, the proposal that I submitted was a draft, it was just a proposal for discussion purposes, but I wanted to set a framework for how we might want to address how folks, citizens, apply for various boards and commissions. So, whatever we come up with with that document, would, I would suggest move into the codification part of this, this process. I'm a big supporter of expanding public comment and also making sure that we allow public comment at all boards and commissions. As liaison, I've sat on some that have it. I was at a BSU transit meeting this morning, I'm chair of the finance committee, it was a finance subcommittee, we had, we had a public comment option. Nobody was there, but at least it was on the agenda, and anybody who wanted to show could. So, I want to go on record as supporting that. I also, councillor Berman referenced the mayor and council compensation. I don't want to talk about it, I want to do something about it, not because of a personal need, but I do think that, I'm not sure when these levels were established, it's probably a long time ago, if we want folks like us to accept these roles within city government that are time, you know, there's a lot of time involved to do this correctly, and I would, with all due respect to all the other boards and commissions, the planning board's another board that has a lot of demands, time demands on our seated board members, that we try to establish, because this, this will have to go before the voters, so as a charter amendment, not necessarily tonight, but I think if we could get on to a workshop agenda at some point in the future, just an open discussion about this, and obviously, any changes that we recommend and the voters approve would, would, you know, in all fairness, be applicable to any incumbent at the next election. So, anybody that's sitting here will have to wait until they either reelect, and if they don't run, then they don't, they don't get the bonus, if you will. And I'm not suggesting a lot of money, but I think that, I think that there, there's value to getting the right folks to step up and sit in these seats, and, and planning board as well.
I would just look at fair market value.
Well, yeah. Fair market value, what are the communities...
No, that's correct. I think you can poll other communities. I think we ought to have a COLA adjustment. I mean, to sit here with the same...
Just automatically?
Yeah, just, just pick a, pick a baseline, and then do a fair baseline, and do a COLA adjustment, and then we don't have to worry about this ten years from now, we're not making the same amount that we were making ten years ago. So, so that's another discussion for another night, but I certainly would like to have that. And that's, that's a charter thing, so I'm not even sure why it's in here.
To comment on compensation, for starters, I'd say I never ran for office for the compensation, and have been very protective of that for most of my time here, because I think oftentimes you'll get people that run for the wrong reasons if compensation is so high. Look down to Massachusetts, for example, when you look what they pay their public officials, it's...
I agree.
It's a, it's a full-time compensation. I mean, Newbury, five years ago, when I looked at Newbury poor, it was like eighty thousand dollars for the mayor, and it was really a part-time role still. So, yeah, I mean, I guess, five, six years ago, like I said, I started looking into that. The problem I discovered is that in the entire state of Maine, we don't compensate very well for any elected officials. So, because I set out on my own, at the time, you know, with Mr. Sutherland, I was advocating for, you know, some kind, at least a bump up, because I actually remember when the compensation did go up, it was around two thousand, maybe a little before that, so it's been twenty-plus years. I mean, at the time, I think, I think mayor made twelve hundred, and councillors got three hundred. So, obviously, that's, as councillor Berman said, I matter-of-factly can say I lose money doing this, no questions about it. At the very least, I handicap myself.
But to be clear, I, you know, I'm thinking like adding, I'm not talking about adding zeros.
But again, that's a conversation...
And I get that, but I was getting to my, getting to my point.
But your point's well taken.
I would just say that I would like some kind of study done, though, because I did it myself, and I discovered throughout the state of Maine, we're right in line with every other community, because nobody's willing to take that jump, because nobody wants to look like, hey, they're paying themselves, and I get that. But I am curious as to what New Hampshire gets. Like I said, maybe not Massachusetts, but the reality is, is, you know, southern Maine, really, as I refer to it, is now northern Massachusetts, so...
I think we can all agree that it's never politically tenable to have this discussion, and now that we've gone to a staggered form, we can't simply say that we're going to pass it on all onto our successors and not run for reelection, so there's always going to be somebody who's voting on something, that's, they're going to end up, you know, they will benefit from it just because of the way, of a staggered system. So, we can all say that to the public, that we know this is not a popular discussion to have, but in our paycheck, if you want to call it that, is doled out every three months, and I think it covers, it covers my takeout for three months, and not even that. So, I mean, like you said, it's, again...
Okay, yep, let's bring it back to the...
Well, I would just, I would just say, years ago, when we went all digital, we went off paper, I spend it in paper now, because I still print things, so, I mean, I'm definitely losing money. There's also one other approach that I've thought about before, that it doesn't go to the charter, it doesn't go to the voters, I mean, is that you give council a budget. Each councillor has a budget with authorized expenses only. But if I value going to a ICRMA convention, it's within my budget, and I see value in learning to improve the city, I make that decision. I decide I'd want to mail all my constituents, I have a budget. I'm almost, I'd be more, give me an annual budget that, again, I make the determination within, and I stay within the role, and there are clear financial mechanisms to protect that, no cash gets dispersed, you know what I mean, or reimbursement for mileage, that would count, but come up with some rules in which you say, certain councillor gets a certain amount per year, they can use it as they see fit for constituent services, to for training purposes, whatever gaps our government accountability financing agency says is within. I'd say I'm okay with a hundred bucks a month, if you can help me improve myself, I'm okay with that, too. But not putting it into a pot of money, but each councillor gets a certain budget.
So, so we've already uncovered the debate, so I want to defer to Mayor McPhail's wish to move forward. I just brought it up because I think we need to talk about it. So, let's just get it on a future workshop agenda, and, and get it out there, and talk about it, and see where it all lands. The last thing I'd like to offer, it's part of the suggested language change, but I've noticed this in my travels with some of the, and actually, it has to do, it came to my, my attention during watching some planning board meetings, is that, that somewhere on page fifteen, in the staff relationship with advisory bodies, boards, and commissions, I think, if this is, if what I'm going to say is true, and I'll defer to city administrator Bohenko, somewhere in that body of that paragraph, that we insert some language to the effect that, reflecting the fact that staff do not have supervisory authority over the advisory bodies, and are not responsible for managing their conduct within the meeting. I think that sometimes there's an over-reliance on the staff to, to run the meeting, make, you know, help fashion decisions, and I think that, that that can set somewhat of a dangerous precedent, and unfair to, to our staff people. So, I don't know how to word it, but...
Chair's responsibility, not staff responsibility, to handle their board.
No, that, that, that's correct. I'm sorry, you are correct, Mayor McPhail. So, as liaison, although, as liaison, I would, I would think that as, if it's affecting a committee that I'm liaison to, that I could bring that concern back to you as the mayor, and then to John as city administrator, if I felt like our staff were being put in that position, that I would want to try to intervene appropriately that way. So, so, that's in my inserts, I'll send it to you, you can play with it, you can think about it, you, if you don't think that needs to be added, then that's okay, but I just, I only bring it up because I feel like I've seen this dynamic occur, and I don't think it's fair to our staff to be put in that position. Other than that, I'm, I appreciate the dialogue, I'm pretty much in sync with everybody, so thank you.
So, one of the things I was thinking when you were mentioning, so obviously, I want public comment, I've made this comment, mom would know when I made it, probably four years ago, about having this public comment, but then it made me think that when we draft, if this is how we go, and we draft the language, we have to be clear that it only applies to, like, city-specific. You can't just go to the Saco Area Economic Development Corporation Board and speak, that these are non-city entities. And then the other one, specifically related to one of my boards, is fair hearing. The fair hearing for general assistants, that is a confidential. So, we can't just write all boards, so we just have to be, like, look at each board when it's appropriate, but anything from, I mean, most of our boards are city-specific, open to the public, but we do have some boards where you're connected to an entity that's not the city. You would not have that same, unfortunately, privilege as a citizen.
Hey, councillor Hewitt, did you have anything you wanted to point out while you had a chance to review on your first...
Sure. First, I found this booklet really helpful for a new councillor, so that was great. Things I noticed going through, that when you guys mentioned the committees, the skill, if, when we have the application, if there's a skill set of what they're looking for, and if you let them know that there will be training provided or a little bit about it, and I'd say, go to the committee and ask them what are the skills they, they need, and what they'd see, like, in a planning board. If somebody can read blueprints, I think it's really helpful, or understand the plans. Other things, I do applaud the idea of getting younger generations involved, and back to that, in our, the first, where it says, like, our overall vision. I know the school board handles the schools, but if somewhere in there, we can mention education of the younger generation, I think that'd be helpful. And again, if we can set the expectation of when there is public comment, letting people know before it happens, you know, whether with, it's a YouTube video from someone in the staff that explains it, or on the sheet they fill in, just to know that we will comment and when to expect it, so that their expectations are clear.
Great, thank you.
I think that's a really good idea about the sign-in sheet, to give a little paragraph about how it works at the beginning. I just really want to second that.
And you don't ask for that phone number, make it optional, if they give the phone number or email, you could actually look at it, it could apply to one of our council meetings.
And you could get and have the...
And again, make it optional, I would never make that a requirement, but I've known people that say they live in my board, and then I'm like, I have to...
Can't find them, right.
Or unfortunately, I can't respond here, I apologize. But if we have the ability to...
Okay.
To have a follow-up mechanism.
If we could have the, on the signup sheet itself, though, if we have the letterhead printed, we could have the list of our email addresses and a little box underneath, though, and with a line, like, if you have any follow-up questions, and you want to talk to, don't want to talk to your councillor directly, even though we are right here, and it's often very welcoming when they actually come up and actually talk to us... welcoming when they actually come up and actually talk to us, because we can finally actually, you know, there's nothing in between, we can actually say, hey, you know, here's the email address. Now, obviously, you know, they can go back to the house and go online, though. But again, if you're a regular person, not used to navigating websites, you know, this is all, it's overwhelming, as my mother would say. So, you go, you know, you have it right there, it's fresh in their mind, you get the email that night, you get them when you know exactly, you're getting them when they want to talk to you, and I think the value will be right there. And like I said, if we just add the extra line on the signup sheet, you know, along with the extra information about, you know, this is, you know, this is how you communicate with us and what we can do. Because I know the planning board added, you know, this is how the meetings goes, this is when you can talk, this is when you cannot talk, and it saved a lot of drama, though. Having it up here, and of course, in our vantage point, I always say that I wish we had the, you know, the crowds the planning board had, I wish we had the school board meeting, because I wish we, if we had a million people up here, it'd be easier to get a handle, handle on what the, the community's thinking, though. So, you know, just to have it there, to encourage people to come up and talk to us, or email us, or give us a ring, I think would be great, though. I mean, we had it on the website, but any time you come on a piece of paper, they're going to walk out of here with, they'll be like, oh, yeah, I can talk to them, they work for me. Sometimes they don't think that. They think that, oh, it's, you know, I don't want to bother them. It's like, no, we work for you, call us, really, it's okay, email us, it's okay, you know.
Okay. Councillor Johnston, what do you got?
I mean, I think we've covered a lot. And I'm notorious for, if you let me stare at something long enough, I'll probably pick at the pieces. But I, I think we covered most of it. There are just two minor things. Maybe it's not a correction, it's just a, a question or, or something to keep on our radar going forward. I'm trying to find the page, page twelve. We speak to the city manager or city administrator, under D, we have evaluation, where we are to evaluate the city administrator on a regular basis, but there's really no, it never has been a clear understanding of what regular is. I mean, we've kind of followed annually, but it doesn't state that. So, for, for his or her, whoever's in that role in the future, I think that it should be clear what future councils are, you know, the expectations are for evaluation. And there's no set-out policy on how we've done it. Some people, the mayor did it, some councillors, I mean, the previous mayor tried to construct something on the fly, thought it had its pros and cons, but I, I would certainly entertain a council discussion on how we evaluate the, the one employee we actually hire. So, again, for the future, and then.
The process that we've done the last couple of years with.
The one that Bill, or former Mayor Doyle, he came up with that. Prior to that, it was kind of hit or miss. Again, I have knowledge of, of how it operated when my. When my father was mayor, everybody's done it differently, and there's nothing wrong with that, because clearly, it just says we're going to evaluate. But I would think, again, going back to how I operate, I want to know what my expectations are, and I'm sure, sure the current city manager or administrator would, would want to know what those expectations are, too. And there is no clear expectation. So, it's something that I think we should, you know, as a group, figure out. Like I said, I, I thought some of what we did was good, but there was other, you know, aspects of it I didn't particularly like.
That would be something we'd work with Emily, where, yep, yep, we could maybe.
So, there's that, again, for the future, just while it's in front of me. And then, page seventeen, we discuss deadlines. So, these are, you know, expectations of, of our packets. And I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but are we following what's actually written here? Because it's been all over the place as far as I, for as long as I've been here, as far as, you know, seventy-two-hour closing of the agenda, staff having to get materials into the packets, I think it's two weeks prior. I, I just don't know if those are, are legitimate expectations. And I would, I would hate to, you know, have somebody pull this up and be like, well, you were supposed to have this two weeks prior, you know what I'm saying? It's just like, it seems like a good opportunity to, whatever we're doing, put in here, and not what may have been expected in the past. I don't know if we ever met those deadlines, to be honest, but.
So, that would be, what do you, section nine, five, yep, placing items on the agenda. But I, I did note on that, and Michelle actually, why you have it, per the Charter, two point oh eight, it's forty-eight hours.
Right, so we have a discrepancy.
As we have in the Rules and Order.
But then we also have the emergency clause, that's not even identified as a process here.
Yep, and, City Minister, what do you, what is your staff requirement?
I mean.
Does this fall in line with what you, about staff?
Certainly, two weeks in advance would not work. I mean, it would be, it would be less ability to inform the council on a timely basis. The way we have it scheduled now is we try to get things in by Wednesday morning, make sure the staff has everything in for Wednesday morning, the Monday before the meeting, so that we can put it together. Typically, if it's a larger, more complicated matter, we'll ask for it in, further in advance. But I think your best bet is to, to what we're doing now. I think it, it's worked pretty well, where we send out a draft on, on Wednesdays. We, I usually receive in from the city council, most of the information Wednesdays, excuse me, from the city staff. I meet with the mayor and, you know, on Tuesday before. And then, before the agenda goes out, I, I just touch base with the mayor, make sure everything's okay, or you have a, if any councillor member had a concern. So, that's why we send out the, the one on Wednesday. I, I think that's pretty new, that we.
Yeah, it's new, and I, I really want to go on record as liking that, because that's a chance to catch things.
I think the way it works now, all in practical purposes, it, it works well, it's just reducing it to writing, I guess.
Yeah, and so, that's, I just, whatever we're doing works for me. I just know that this particular language has, has come up in the past from members of the public that have called us out for not following.
Right.
And so, it seems like an opportune time to.
But we're allowed to be more restrictive in our policies than the Charter allows.
Right, but we should have whatever's.
Consistency is good.
But we should have whatever's here be what we actually do.
Right, because I, like I said, for as long as I can remember, I don't think we ever were, or our staff ever had to get things to, you know, the executive assistant two weeks prior, I just, it's unrealistic.
No, but then we were also getting a lot of Monday additions without knowing about it.
Correct, which.
Which, that was the biggest regret.
Reading this says it will be tabled.
That was the issue we had.
So, I mean, that's, that's the expectation under this, is if, if something arrives the day of, it will be tabled.
Yeah, tabled.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
I think, I think the point is just to update, the point is to update this to current practice.
Yeah. I will say that I, I have appreciated the, the draft going out.
Yes.
That's relatively new, and less than a year, I think. That's very helpful.
Yeah, that was like in October.
Yeah.
That was part of the new process.
Okay, I was just checking. Okay. So, we, with that, we would need to update, per the Charter being forty-eight hours on the deadline. So, all item commentary supporting documentation for council meetings must be turned in by two PM, two Fridays before, take that out.
I would say.
I'm okay with that.
It would just bring us to a screeching halt.
Right.
Yeah, perhaps the, the city administrator and staff can just update this, whatever the current practice is.
Yep.
Out of the meeting.
Yep. Okay. Anything else, Councillor Johnston?
Like I said, if you let me look long enough, I'll find other things, but given the ti- given the time, I'm all set.
Okay, basically, some of the stuff I had was corrections that needed to be completed. I did want section two or page three, under the comprehensive plan, I feel that that should be updated to add and monitored by the LRPC for adherence to the plan, approved three eight twenty-two. Now that we have the LRPC created. And correct me if I'm wrong, is CAFRA not called CAFRA anymore?
No, it, they changed it to AFRA, I think it is.
Yeah, it's.
Annual Financial Report.
Yep.
CAFRA had a connotation.
Right, so that would need to be updated to the correct accounting term. Page four, under Saco City Council, General Powers and Responsibility, roles of the mayor. Under the role of the mayor, I would like to add that the agenda meetings are open to councillor members for informational purposes. So that all councillor members know, deputy mayor is automatically invited for when he is able to attend, and then any other councillor that wishes to join in and listen and to kind of get an update, you're more than welcome. D, under appointment of a city administrator, that needs to follow chapter three point oh one of the Charter. The mayor, uh, the city, the mayor appoints the city administrator. Rules and Order States Council.
Confirms.
Of course, our email addresses need to be updated for Ward two and Ward six. Yep. And mayor. By default, six moving, yep. And I was going to throw it out for discussion about the council group email address. Is everybody okay with the list that's on there? With the understanding that that list is, so if you wanted to email, council is full and did not want somebody, you would need to email individually.
Could you refresh my memory who's on that list?
I'm sorry?
Could you refresh my memory who's on the full list?
Yep, it is the mayor, councillors, city administrator, executive assistant to the city administrator, which is Michelle, communications director, and city clerk.
Sounds good to me.
I personally have no issue with it, because I understand where it goes. But I, I'm also curious, from a staff perspective, do they necessarily want to have all those emails? Or, or are they just, I mean, my email gets clogged up nonstop, so I can only imagine, from their perspective, when it doesn't even necessarily pertain to them?
Well, if I might, Your Honor, but I, I would say that those that are on that list want to be able to, if there's something that comes in that, that they want to help out, make sure it gets responded to. You know, we know, you know, councillor members are very busy with their own lives and jobs, so I think one of the things we like to do is make sure that if there's something in there, a timely thing that a constituent has sent you, that we want to make sure we're responding to it. And not, you know, if it, if it only went to councillor members, that's fine, but I would, you know, at the very least, you'd want to make sure it came to the city administrator and the executive assistant. But, you know, from a comfort standpoint, your, all your emails are FOA anyways, I mean, so, from my perspective, it, we do it to look, to make sure we help you, we support you, to get things done, so.
So, is there an email rule you can set up where it goes as a reply to whoever sends it to the council, it gets CC'd to the council back? So, for example, I responded to that email on Saturday about, from the Scarborough resident, about, I responded, I didn't inform you all, that, that's on me. But I did respond to this, that gentleman.
I mean, I don't.
Um, where, that was on me, I could have easily just done it myself, but I totally forgot to.
Right.
Because I was on my phone.
I'll have to check this whole reply-all thing, because I'll, I'll just look into it, but at, at the very least, if anybody wants to send me something, you know, that you've replied to, I'd be more than happy to make sure that people get that information, you know, so, again, it's your call. All I would ask is, at the very least, myself and the executive assistant be on that, that, that CC or whatever on that list it, it goes to on the council, you know.
So, my, the way I've kind of viewed it is, I mean, obviously, we, we would want the city administrator and, you know, the executive assistant, since that's the right hand, making sure that he's checking his email, that makes sense. I just, I just, again, from the perspective of the public, again, me personally, I don't care. I don't put anything in email form that I, I wouldn't say to someone's face, number one, or I, I recognize it, it's, you know, it's available to anybody. But oftentimes, the public is thinking they're addressing, you know, one of us eight, and, and they don't necessarily want the communications director to know, or whoever else might be on the list, I didn't look at the list. It, it's grown over the years, I guess, is what I'm, I'm saying. It, it used to just be the city manager and executive assistant, and I, I believe, the city clerk. I don't care one way or the other. I, I really just, you know, think the public needs to understand that. It doesn't happen often, but I, I certainly have, I've seen, you know, I don't know, inappropriate emails, if you will, that, you know, and then, of course, they found out, and they're like, I didn't know that when, X, Y, and Z. And I've seen it with the school board, too, because they do the same thing, where it goes through several other administrators over there. So, I get it why it's that way, just, I don't know.
I mean, from, I, I can see situations like that, and the communications director and city clerk probably wouldn't need to receive all emails, right? Individual emails from one person to the council about a particular issue may not need. But when issues start bubbling up in the city and are creating some real momentum around a particular issue, or situation, or problem, or emergency, or failure of, of the city, I think the city wants to respond and get out information quickly. And that's where the communications director can be really an integral part of it. And I think issues that involve certain things might involve the city clerk, too. So, the alternative to, to having them on that chain would be for the city administrator's office to very quickly engage them in the conversation. And I guess I don't really have a preference one way or the other, but I think that's really the function it serves here, and personally, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and again, I would just, just add, going forward, if city staff is addressing those issues, and again, it, it could be on any one of us to then ask you, but I, I personally would, would like a follow-up, because as we've seen over the last year or so, there's been several issues in, in the areas of, we'll say, codes, that I'm assuming somebody's addressing, but then I get another hundred emails, and it's like, well, like I said, I, I always give city staff the benefit of the doubt that they did, and this might be somebody that's just not getting the answer that they actually want, but I have no way of knowing that, because I didn't say, you know, I didn't get a report. This, we addressed X, Y, and Z on such-and-such dates, and I think that would be very helpful, as we've seen, like I said, lately. I mean, there was one point lately, recently, that I was actually about to hop in the car and, and drive to that individual's house, because I wanted to get the full picture, because it was all fragmented.
So, consensus, we'll leave it as now, with just some.
I think the closing the loop is an important thing, so.
Yep.
We'll work on that.
Okay, so then we're just real quickly, under section eight, city council meetings. We are changing the meeting schedule to the first and third Monday of the month, with the second being dedicated to workshops. We have not done it for a while. I know when I first came on, it was kind of followed through, but it was not. If the holiday falls on a Monday, do you guys want to have a meeting on Tuesday, or leave it for that week? Unless we, unless we need to, and we know that we have items, and then it would be, it could be.
The only reason, I, I don't know, it's, if staff's going to have a holiday, I want them to have a holiday. I don't want them prepping for Tuesday.
Right, right. I mean, we have not needed them. Exactly, or we can move it to the fourth.
Yeah.
Add it on the end.
I mean, holidays are pre-scheduled, we know, we can forecast them.
Yep, and, and again, as the agenda is going, we'll know, you know, whether we need to have it or not. You know, if we know that there's not many items or stuff that we can carry through, we should be okay.
Just personally, I'd rather see it moved to another Monday meeting, because it's easier for my schedule.
Yep.
So, we're sticking with the way it has occurred in the last four years? Because previously, it did move to the Tuesday, and I got accustomed to that, but to be honest, I've actually kind of liked knowing that, okay, well, Martin Luther King Day, we're not going to have it on Tuesday. But my concern always is workflow with, you know, not just council level, but staff level, and, and I, I think in the last four or five years that we've, you know, moved to the current, I've, I've seen the, I don't want to say a backjam or backlog, but I, I certainly have seen the flow become an issue. a backjam or backlog, but I, I certainly have seen the flow, um, become an issue, maybe it's just me. I mean, having three weeks in between at times, I'm, I'm, my brain, I'm somewhere else, three weeks with no city council, um, so it's like a, a big ramping back up of getting me invested again, um, so, but I, I'm not opposed to it. The only question I have is, so we're moving back to the way it previously was, uh, first, third, regular Mondays, and then that second week would be a workshop, is, there's no concern from, from staff level for that, because one of the reasons that we moved away from that, um, in the past, was that, again, that flow. Me personally, I like the workshop, I always have, I like.
If we find that there's agenda items, we can do just as we did tonight, very quick.
Yeah. So, so will we, will we continue with this format in that case? Because I've done it several different ways, I've done it a regular meeting, actually, I've done it a workshop, then the regular meeting, I've done it, the regular meeting and workshop like this evening, and then we've done it completely separate. And honestly, I'm, don't think that we need to be set in stone one way or the other.
No, I've always liked it separate, because I used to be able to plan my vacations around workshops. No, I, I.
Yeah, no.
So I, I feel like the first two years, I hardly missed a meeting, and then we went to, was it four times a month at one point?
Yeah.
Initially, and then I was like, well, I'm still gonna take my vacation, and I'd miss a meeting and not even know, I'd plan, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what the agenda would be, so am I missing something important, or not? Workshop allowed me to just say, hey, plan for the second week.
So all, all I would say, which is fine, all I would say is, I would like to be able to have that, let's not be so rigid that it's like, okay, Tuesday is only a workshop, like I, I've experienced, or, why did I say Tuesday? The second Monday would be, um, a workshop, period. I like the ability to do this, so if we have to throw a couple items on, we do that.
And in April, we have to go.
Anything that's time-delayed, time, uh, time-crucial, we can throw it on, or.
In April, it's always a far.
That we don't want to carry over.
Far council meeting, just because we're in the budget.
Well, and.
April was always the.
I mean, you could make the rule that basically, if we're going, well, the informal rule, basically, we go through the budget season, we're not having a workshop on the second, we're doing council business, and then you can have a workshop on that fourth if you wanted to, because obviously, budget season takes precedence over us talking about future policy, that is, that would, again, keep everything flexible, but practical for the budget season, where the last thing you want to do is come to a halt, where we have, yeah, we have discussions that are probably better suited for once, you know, we get past the budget season, everything slows down, and that's, that's why, by design, that's usually when we talk, talk about charter amendments and stuff, because we have time to actually stop and breathe, and really think about it, because you really don't want to be throwing that stuff in between the budget season, when it should be budget, 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 you know?
City administrator.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that the idea of the first and third is to be able to allow staff to have that breather between, I mean, it was when I arrived, it was like, you know, Monday, then Tuesday, you were starting to work on the next agenda, et cetera, et cetera, and it's a lot easier for us to put information together, uh, and with the advance notice of maybe the first and third. Like, tonight, there was a need to put on a, an emergency purchase, and I think we still need that, and I, I would recommend that you keep the format, um, you know, if there's nothing on it, nothing on it, and then just go right to the, uh, to your workshops, if necessary, so, um, yeah, I think it works, I think it'll work well, and if you really have to put something on, if you have a holiday, you have the fourth Monday, you can always do.
So we can scratch the holiday, the Tuesday after a holiday, out of the regular council meeting section, scratch that out. Uh, council workshop number two would be held the second Monday per month. Okay, we did the deadline.
And while you're looking at that, Madam Mayor, just to Council Johnson's point, though, yeah, I'm not a big fan of the three, uh, I know it doesn't happen all the time, though, but those three-week gaps that we get, though, because I like being able to stay on top of things, keeps you fresh, keeps you in the flow of things, therefore, you don't have to, like, restart and try to get reoriented again, so, if that means utilizing that fourth council meeting, even if it's just a short meeting, though, but I mean, as we can see, once we start talking about something, you know, time adds up, though, and I don't want to see a situation where, you know, because going back to the old format, the reason the, the previous mayor went to the new format is to sort of, you know, give us more time to talk about things, and not try to bump it all into two marathon meetings, so, to your point, though, having, you know, the workshop, but still be able to do council business, if we had to, that's great, but keeping the fourth as an actual option, because, for this, you know, again, just the, the flow of it also, so we don't just, you know, we're paying for electricity for no reason, you know?
Okay, those are some of my quick ones, um, but then along the line of the agenda, or the scheduling, gonna throw it out to you guys, um, currently, right now, I provide the meeting schedules quarterly, how would you feel about going on a year, if I gave a full year? Do you feel that would help your schedules, or? Or six months, we can do half?
I would like, and I'll go on record as, uh, supporting a, a full-year schedule, and we have flexibility, I mean, I think we can.
Yep, oh, yeah, and it's.
We can change dates if we have to, but it would be.
Too much, we can always change it.
Yeah, from my calendar standpoint, I, I would find that to be advantageous.
I like the idea, but at the same time, just, you know, to keep our, you know, a, a sharp, though, if you could still send it to us in maybe three-month chunks, so that way it's easy, so that way it's, that's so overwhelming, because, I mean, that's a quick email you can look at, you know, reference, though, but as the mayor, I've always advocated the mayor having the pri- a priori, uh, priority or prerogative to set the meeting agenda, but that was setting the meeting's schedule, because I think that's, the mayor should have that power, but this is the next best thing.
And I mean, all we're actually doing is just voting on the year out, and then we just get updates, like, reminder, this is the next quarter, so that we're not bringing it back to the floor, we only do it once, and.
Correct, yep.
Hey, well, twelve, yeah, four times, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any last comments or discussions on this? So we'll go, we'll move this forward, also, um, Michelle will make the changes, present it to us with the red line, some of the updates, then in addition, on a separate effort, we will take the document, maybe kind of try to split it, and separate with some more definitive actions and ideas of what is being presented. Okay, so that's gonna move us now to the transportation center and new lot parking discussion.
So, at this point, I'd ask that both Tracy and Patrick come up, and we can get started on this. Just get to my, random here. So what we did provide you was a downtown parking study report, uh, but what I wanted to do is, we're gonna hand out just, uh, some information from that, so that we don't have to go through the whole study yet. Tracy, you can provide the information.
We should, uh, thank the staff for sitting through that whole discussion to, uh, wait here for this item.
So, what I'd like to do is, between Tracy and Patrick, to go through and start with the overview of, uh, going back to the August of 2021, uh, and talking about the contract with StanTech to complete the downtown parking study. So, Tracy, why don't you get started, and maybe Patrick, if you could, because you were here, maybe you could also help out with giving the background.
Try this one, here we go. Good evening, my name is Tracy Disjardins, I'm the Director of Economic Development for the City of Saco. Basically, what I did is I took the original report from, um, 2021, and I just kind of did a summary, and that's what you have in front of you, so I was just, gonna kind of go through this, um, quickly. As an, as an overview, um, in August of 2021, council entered into a contract with StanTech to complete a downtown parking study. So, on March 28th, the 2022 StanTech, um, team provided a presentation on the study, and then in April of 2022, um, the council adopted the, um, the parking study, and I, as you have attached to you as well, um, the full report. The study focused on downtown and Saco Island, and analyzed current parking issues and concerns, conducted an inventory and utilization analysis, reviewed policies and practices related to parking, and proposed recommendations to improve downtown parking now and into the future. In this map, you can see what the study areas were, primary commercial, um, activity center immediately adjacent neighborhoods, and Saco Island, and you can see the different, um, parking lots that was done, and then, of course, we have the new, um, purchased lot, which is 142, and that's highlighted in the yellow, which is next to the, um, transportation center. And the study goals were to plan for short and long-term parking needs, optimize the using of existing, existing parking supply, coordinate parking management with a flex, flexible approach, year-round, establish parking precedence to better, um, align long-term development with city goals, and foster a walkable downtown, also to ensure parking system is accessible, navigatable to residents and visitors. One of the things that they looked at, um, in this map, is the inventory, so, um, public parking is primarily on-street, no large central parking lots, as we know, there's bits here and there, basically throughout the city, but we don't have, like, one big lot as far as for our parking. Um, public parking primarily is two hours, limited wayfinding, um, to public parking, and the basically abundance of regulations, so, and Pat can kind of speak to this, and I think that some of this has been improved. Twice as much, um, customer-only parking as there is public parking, and many lots in downtown are reserved, and these would be private ownerships. Um, prime, what the, um, utilization tells us is that prime spaces downtown can be very busy, most other parking goes unused, off-street lots, and the Saco Transportation Center. Then we broke down into the different strategies, so strategy one was to add to the on-street parking supply, so you can see from here, you have the different streets, and the orange is kind of potential one-way, um, and then you have the blue, which is exist in one-way. So when you look at these Cuts Ave, Pleasant Ave, and Stora Street, where, um, looked as potential as being one-way, and it was nice to see that Cuts has stayed as one-way, um, again, it does go along with the parking study that was done, but there are a couple of other options in there. Um, the idea of this is to create additional public parking plus to calm traffic, um, strike parking where travel lanes formerly existed. The strategy two was to improve the efficiency of the existing parking supply. As you can see here, there was, um, you have four divided lots and eighty-seven spaces that are separated. The idea was to consolidate off-street lots, simplify the user experience, improve the pedestrian experience and safety, coupled with reduced off-street parking requirements. Then if you look here, as potential concept, it was to take all of those lots, um, and unify them, and basically would give you a lot more spaces, of a hundred and thirteen that this had put in, integrate landscaping, um, streamline vehicle access point, and you have accessible spaces and direct pedestrian access in new public spaces. Strategy three was to create framework for shared parking district. So this is what's to, um, allow for lot owners to benefit from share and supply, so, um, with this, it was to connect private parties and serve as a facilitator of formal agreements, to look at, um, public-private partnership, the city provides in-kind services to lot owners who share supply for more general uses, and phase three would be permitting and revenue sharing, city-branded shared parking supply pricing structure leads to revenue sharing and reinvestment. So this is kind of taking a look at the parking, and where the demands were, and how you can kind of fit and move those together, of course, housing would be more into the evening hours, and then you have your office space would be during the, uh, morning hours, and then restaurants would be, of course, usually after, in the evening hours, after 6:00 P.M. Strategy four was to plan for high-activity events, this is looking at the areas when it come to, um, the events as far as like Saco Main Street, um, does in the downtown area, uh, was, uh, larger, unutilized facilities such as these, where the star may be strong candidates for absorbing demand, so what other options are there for parking when it comes time to events? The other thing to look at during events time is to, um, to have, um, shuttles, and look at buses that people can park elsewhere, for the Harbor Fest, we parked at, um, TA, and we shuttle people down to the festival. Strategy five was to improve the multimodal environment within downtown Saco, and between downtown Saco and Saco Island. As you can see, this, there's no crosswalk markings here, this area that is, um, that this photo is at the bridge, this is actually the entrance to the, uh, to the lot we just purchased, and there would be some improvements made to this, as well for safety as well, Pat can talk more onto that one. So as you can see, um, the critical pedestrian connections in the Saco, that is in need of improvement to encourage walking and support safety when traveling to and from downtown, and parking areas on Saco Island. Strategy six was to invest in a comprehensive branding and parking wayfinding system, this is, uh, an example of one that was done for downtown, um, Luns, Lunsberg, and it, just kind of like a map, in some areas you go into, you'd have maps as far as on, um, where there are park, where parking is available, um, another would be to have signage directing people and where they can go park.
And right now, the staff is, uh, working on this, and, uh, it's a, it's not an easy task, uh, but it, it, it's pretty comprehensive what they're going through, so, we're looking at about how long, Tracy, before we're thinking about.
On the wayfinding?
Yeah.
Um, well, for the wayfinding, um, for what we're doing, isn't within the parking, so our wayfinding signage is actually, we hope to have installed.
By fall? Yeah, we go for RFP, but we didn't really do into the parking on that one.
But we will have, like, district maps.
Right.
And within there, we'll be able to have the labels on there as far as, so people can look on the maps and know where to park. And I believe that Public Works has done some other signage as far as when directing people to parking. Again, some of the things have been done, or are working on, just as John said. Strategy seven is to monitor and adjust system performances over time, um, I'm gonna kind of let Pat talk to this a little bit, because I think one of the things when you have studies done, is what you see, is that, again, the time that this was done, does it meet to, to today? Um, we're seeing definitely, um, more businesses, we're seeing, um, more people moving into the area, especially down in the mill areas, um, there's not a whole lot of vacancies down there now, and those, those areas are really filling up, where, I don't know how many ribbon cuttings we've had in the past, I'm down, just down to one ten alone, but definitely seeing an influx as far as within the area, that can certainly, as we look through the study and making those adjustments as we're going on, and hopefully, you know, obtaining the new parking lot, the new parking lot that we just, um, purchased, actually has ninety-four spots, however, twenty of those are designated for, um, 146, which is the, um, building next to it, as part of the contract zone needed parking, so, we have entered into a, an agreement with the owner of that building.
And we do get paid for those.
Yep.
Spaces.
Do you want to elaborate anymore to this, Pat?
Well, you can finish up.
Okay, I'll finish, and then Pat can go back over. Strategy eight was to incorporate accessible parking spaces in line with state recommendations, again, this is, um, and I think every community has that, where are, are handicap or ADA parking, um, people want to be able to park in front of the business that they want to go into, um, and do we have enough, um, ADA spaces for, for folks? And strategy nine was to address no emergency parking ban procedure, and again, I believe that the city's done, um, from what I've seen with the social media, getting the information out there, letting people know where they can park. getting the information out there, letting people know where they can park, mapping it out. Our communications department is top-notch as far as I'm concerned, and they're very good about getting information out to people. And that's it of the nine strategies. Again, you have the full report, but I really narrowed it down for you, so.
I don't want to jump right into train station-specific if you, if anyone wants to talk, you know, global parking strategies for a second, but when you're ready, I'll get into the specifics of what we implemented and why, and where we can go from here.
If I might, Your Honor, it might be useful, given the time, to focus in on the Transportation Center and also the new parking lot that we have. I think we're pretty well, everybody's pretty well aware of the other areas, but we'd like to get some input from the City Council on the new parking lot that we have and how that can, you know, intertwine with the Transportation Center and also with some businesses downtown. So, that's kind of the feedback that we'd like to hear about those two areas.
Yeah, thank you, Madam. I just, actually, going back to what the inventory tells us slide, it's pretty remarkable to me that the only big public parking lots are the Saco Transportation Center on that map. And, you know, I used to joke that nothing brought out public comments like dogs on the beach, but now I have to say it's dogs on the beach and charging for parking at the Transportation Center. There's been nothing that's filled up my inbox like that.
We should have learned from Bitterford, the garage.
Yeah, and, you know, and so we would actually have to modify this map a little bit, because while it is still public parking, it's two-hour parking or paid parking, and no longer free public parking. And, you know, we have somebody here who's interested, but there's a lot of public interest in this. And as we try to make parking more accessible, I worry that the changes we've made to the Saco Transportation Center, and I want to hear more about the staff perspective on that, but have actually made parking downtown a little bit harder, and that's the experience that I'm hearing from people. And so, I wonder if there isn't an opportunity with our new lot to still create some short-term parking, some paid parking, but find maybe still a free day lot in there somewhere to help alleviate some of this pressure, allow the people using the Transportation Center to have a free day lot and to, you know, utilize an extra inventory in that way to, you know, maybe, maybe make some sort of compromise.
Do you want to respond to that?
I can, yeah, I want to get back to your discussion of how to use the new lot, I think is a big, but I think it's important to understand, when the Transportation Center was built, and it was built as to try to draw people by another mode of transportation to our downtown while we had several empty vacant shells of buildings sitting around it. Now, you've got Building 108, I can't tell you the number of units, it's a lot of units. Building four comes online. We waited decades for that redevelopment, and then you have hundreds of, you know, hundred-plus units and all of the cars that go with them. It changed the dynamic of how the island was used. And at Public Works, we're not really the parking czars, but we end up with a lot of the phone calls. And to get panicked phone calls from people that are arriving at the train station because the lot is full, both lots just full, and they're trying to get on a train to go to Logan Airport and fly out of, you know, out of the area for vacation, or go visit relatives or whatnot, and there's literally no place to park. Now, we watched over the, over the last ten-plus years, people drop off vehicles in the lower lot and get in other vehicles and sometimes leave our community and go to a neighboring community. So, the lot was just a, became a storage place for extra vehicles to some degree. Now, not globally and not across the board, but substantial amounts. So, you had cars that wouldn't move, you had cars that weren't registered. It was just a storage yard. It's way too valuable a space to be a storage yard. So, the paid parking is really just to assure, it's not a revenue generator. We didn't, nobody put that in the budget to make a lot of money off of it. It's to create a mechanism to track how long cars are there, because it's pay-by-plate, so their plate is getting entered into a system that our parking enforcement can monitor and enforce. And it also creates the turnover that's necessary to take advantage of the fact that we turned that facility into a transit hub to access buses and trains and to bring economic vitality to our downtown. So, in that sense, it's already accomplishing that. I don't think you could, I mean, I don't think you can put any pay parking system into place and think that you're going to get positive feedback from most users. I mean, I don't feel like when I go and pay for parking in other cities, it's a, you know, necessarily positive experience the first time I do it, but I'm awfully glad to have that parking spot to utilize. So, I think you do have the option with the new lot to decide if you want a pay structure or not. I mean, we paid a lot of money for, to acquire that downtown parking. At some point down the road, I think you'll have to make it a pay system to just create the turnover. But that's really, I would look at the train station and what we're trying to do there, and it's to allow people to use the services, and five dollars a day is not a lot to pay for day parking if you compare it to anyplace else that charges for parking to create that turnover. So, I think the rate is about as low as you could get for daily parking, to still make it valuable enough for somebody to consider other options and keep it open to as many users as possible. So, that was the idea behind why it's there and why we're doing it, not to make money, not to cause inconvenience, not to trouble anyone, just to make it more accessible for more users.
That makes perfect sense. Just to ask one more follow-up question. Would it be possible to do that same system but make the first twelve hours free? And how much would you, you'd still get the tracking, you'd still get, you know, some revenue for long-term parking, you'd still cause people to make some choices.
May I?
I don't know.
May I?
That's just a question.
Yeah.
Sorry. I'm just going to kind of go back to what Pat was saying as far as the reasoning behind it. At the last train committee meeting, I do participate in those, and it was brought up about Saco going to be charging for parking, and with the folks there, they were thrilled. And the reason why is because we were allowing people to utilize the transportation system by having parking available for them.
I'm just trying to go through in my mind the way that transactions are processed and how that would work to utilize a free with payment kicking in after twelve hours. I mean, the app does have a lot of flexibility, I'm just not sure that that's going to be a straightforward transaction process, to be entering your plate but not paying anything until some certain hour.
So, you need like, you know, you need the ticket or whatever, and the ramps like this, where like the first two hours are free or something like that, and you put in how many hours you want, and it just calculates, you know, it charges you for the hours you put in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's probably possible, I've just, I can't quite figure out how that.
Yeah, we could take a look. North Station, if you haven't been there recently, they've started to put gates up that you have to actually scan your Amtrak ticket in order to get through the gates. Is there somehow we can implement that? No charge, no fee, but it's your ticket, you still get a printout, like, I don't know what you want to call that, you guys know that, but you would go in, you take your ticket, you scan it, or you buy it at the kiosk at the train station, you scan it, it prints out a pass for as long as that ticket is a lot, up to a certain amount, like if it was a week. Because I've used it in that capacity when I've gone to North Station, to the air station, to, whatever, I've used it myself as a consumer, and the pay doesn't really bother me. I get if, what if we just made one of the parking lots Amtrak only? And you need to scan a ticket, and it prints out some kind of pass. I know you can work with Amtrak, because they did it at North Station. I had to find my ticket in order to get out of the train station, because it wouldn't even let me out, and I had no clue about it, which was kind of, when you have a one-year-old and a seven-year-old, you start to panic, and I realized, I was like, oh, I'm finding more, but can't handle the North Station with a ticket here.
I think you're, I think you're looking at a far different level of computer software and cost of the system, and also keep in mind that most people are, we, ideally, we did look into, we did look into that. The problem is, most people on the train are not going to the ticket kiosk, they're not printing anything out, I mean, they're simply in an app on their phone. So, now you have to get the Amtrak app talking to your pay system app, which probably means changing pay systems potentially. There's a lot more to the.
You don't pay, the gate just opens with a valid ticket down at North Station.
So, you'd have to have a, so you want a gated.
You have to be linked into that system that already exists.
So, you'd want to, yeah, if you wanted to go a gated parking lot tied into the Amtrak ticketing system, you're on a much different price scale than what we just implemented. I couldn't tell you what it is, I couldn't tell you how that would work, but the other idea of the two-hour lot was that we wanted a plate, we wanted, there's still a lot of turnover of people dropping people off and picking them up from this community and surrounding communities at the Regional Transportation Center. We wanted to have those, that upper lot is down to after the outer ring of that lot was taken away and given to the bus storage and charging and future charging as part of their lease. It's down under twenty parking spots or so. The idea was, that is a meeting, that is a public meeting space that can be reserved by groups. Most of their meetings are under two hours, so we researched that to make sure. So, it allows people to visit the offices of BSO OB, it allows people to use the public meeting space, and it allows people to pick up and drop off friends and family without having to pay, without being in a pay lot. So, that was the idea of keeping that parking lot two-hour. By not doing it two-hour, what you do is the upper lot, that free lot fills up with day travelers on Amtrak, therefore pushing your pickup, drop-off, or meeting space users to the then-pay lot. And then you have BSO OB reaching out, looking to see if their board members or committee members or people attending meetings can get free passes. And when you put their license plate into the system, that's a ripple effect across all of our other pass systems, like resident beach parking and all of these other things. We just don't, we don't have that robust a parking enforcement staff. We have one person. Everything else is then, if we make this a very complicated system, you're, you need to administer that system, you need to have someone providing all the checks and balances from software implementation to license plate clearing and adding. It just becomes cumbersome for our staffing levels in the police department or certainly Public Works. I mean, our city electrician takes care of our parking meters when he's not doing traffic signals, city facilities, and luckily, he knows how to take care of parking meters pretty well, because we've had the beach parking. So, it's a staff resource thing if we make this overload complicated as well. Again, I think the new lot is your great option within a very reasonable walking distance for a downtown area to do a free or modified pricing structure, but I would keep it simple so we can use our parking system and plate entry that we use at the beaches, just because we don't have, we don't have the Boston and Portland Parking Enforcement Division. We have a person.
Counsel Johnson.
Thank you. So, I think Director Fox has done a pretty good job at explaining, you know, how we arrived at this current situation. And again, I think it's important to recognize that in 2007 or thereabouts, when the city of Saco bonded and built this train station, I don't, I think a lot of people are confused in that regard, they think it's an Amtrak station. It's the Saco taxpayers that approved this, it's been the Saco taxpayers paying for this facility and the parking ever since. So, when I hear that term "free parking," well, I learned a long time ago in my life, there's no such thing as free. Somebody's paying for it. And so, in some regards, this is very similar to the transfer station many years ago or several years back, where, very unpopular, we decided to no longer offer the quote-unquote "free three yards." And again, I caught plenty of flack for that at the time, but I recognize that we were placing a burden on many residents of used the transfer station. So, why wouldn't you put it on those users of that facility? Same thing applies here. But what we've seen, and so for many years, you know, you had the lower lot, I don't know what the actual designation is, but I've always called it the lower lot. It was for, you know, long-term parking up to fourteen days. Well, it was entirely unenforceable from the police department, and years ago, we didn't even have a parking enforcer. Now, we do, but it's not enforceable the way it's currently laid out there. What you have occur is individuals at any one of those apartment buildings, now that they're fully built out, will just move their car around, and then the time starts all over again. So, again, it's become, it's not new, it's in the last five, six years, it's the overflow lot for the apartment buildings in the downtown that don't have adequate parking. So, again, I was a little taken aback by the implementation as far as charging, because it didn't rise up to this level. As I stated two weeks ago, I have no problem defending the merits of it, I just was, all of a sudden, we were charging, and then people are upset, which I can understand why they're upset, but like I said, there is no such thing as free parking, we have to maintain the building. And again, I advocated for a very large purchase, a $450,000 for another parking lot, and that was the solution to, you know, how we manage parking in the downtown. So, again, I'm supportive of it. I understand it's, you know, ruffled some feathers, and certainly every individual's situation is different, but I can't always look at each individual, you know, person's situation when we make these decisions. Clearly, you know, staff recognized an issue, I recognized an issue, I witnessed it, I heard from constituents about, you know, the issues of people leaving their cars there forever. I mean, there's photos at Traffic Safety we'd seen in the years past where cars just buried in snow and DPW can't even plow the lot. So, in that itself becomes a safety issue, too. So, again, in regards to the new lot, I guess my question would be, when do we plan on rolling that out, timeframe? And when it comes to, again, the parking fee structure, and again, I get it's difficult. I would like, I don't know if we go to a placard system in this sense, but, you know, recognizing that there are, it seems like rather sizable portion of, you know, people that live in the area that are traveling as students to go down, is there a way to attach, say, you go to Boston University, I'm a university student, we can give them a discounted rate, not a full rate, just something that is a little bit fairer, because, again, I don't want to discourage someone from getting their education and utilizing the train station, like that was the whole concept. But still, at the same time, charging five dollars for the average person that's going down seems fair, so.
If I might just to follow up on what Director Fox was talking about, this, the five dollars is really to try to turn over cars. It's not really to raise substantial revenues. What I think we need to do, or we should do for the new lot, is internally develop something for the council to look at. There's sections of the, we may want to divide up the lot and say, okay, this section, you know, is for this type of user. So, I think we're going to be looking this spring to improve the lot. You can see at the picture of the entryway to the lot, and I know that Director Fox has some ideas relative to how we want to protect pedestrians. There's a lot of things that we have to look at here. We also want to make sure people don't come in with RVs or anything that may, you know, or trailers that they leave there, so we need to look at that. We want to be able to have the downtown businesses have access to it as well. So, it's really a combination of things. And Tracy, what was the number of space, 113 or?
Ninety.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
Plus or minus twenty.
Yeah, but we, again, we are getting our rental on that, but, so, it's something we might want to look at, different portions of the lot and how we want to use it. I mean, the idea of people being able to use it, if they want to, you know, maybe there would be an incentive if you want to walk ways to go to the train station, maybe there's something we can do there. But at this point, I think what we need to do, our responsibility as a staff, is to come up with a plan and then let the council decide, okay, we'd like you to do, you know, maybe not that, but maybe this. But I think tonight, as we get to 10 o'clock, I think tonight what we need to do is, the direction that we would like to see is have us focus on the new property, the new lot, and see how we can develop something that might be useful for various constituencies. So, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. Five dollar, or the lower lot, I think should be maintained. We are reaching out to the Amtrak to change their website, because one of the things they had on there was free parking, but they didn't put in a two-hour limit. I think that caused some people some issues. So, we, the chief reached out to them today. I think that the two-hour parking is something that you need to make sure that allows for those that are dropping people off or picking people up. In addition, we have now the buses from the regional. people up. In addition, we have now the buses from, the regional bus coming in and utilizing spaces. But how many spaces did that take up?
That, I want to say took 12, 12 to 15 spaces away.
So we really need those spaces for people dropping off, picking up, and as, there are other activities at the transportation center, such as the conference room, that we'd like to have people use. And typically, the meetings don't go longer than two hours. It might help keep moving them along. But the two-hour situation, I think is, I think is reasonable, and gets to what we need to have done at that particular area.
The only other statement I want to make is that, because it is important, what do people get for this added, you know, with this revenue? We've really put all of our parking revenues directly back into the resources that they, we have a history of doing that down at the beach. And I can tell, you've already made, you made a budget amendment this year to increase custodial services at a cost of about $50,000 a year, and private security to supplement and respond to the constituents using the facility feeling safer. So we're hiring private security. That could cost an additional, so we could be putting $100,000 more of service enhancements directly into those using that facility. Therefore, I mean...
It does not, does not hit local taxes.
Yeah, this $5 would go towards that. Still not going to cover all of that. So it's, we are enhancing the services considerably.
And it hasn't. For many years, the train station operates at a net negative. But since you brought up train station, or how I phrase this, hours of operation, the hours of operation is based on the fact that city staff needs to have somebody present, correct? Like, we've determined at this point that security is an issue, and therefore, it opens at a certain time and closes at a certain time.
Yes.
I think there's a lot of perception out there that, you know, we're, I don't know, limiting for other reasons, when in reality, it comes down to resources, and not having enough resources to address the issues that are there.
Unfortunately, yes. The events that were occurring from 5:00 AM to 8:00 AM in that building, and from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM warranted action on behalf of every, every user. So, yes, that's why the hours are reduced, for no other reason than that.
I'd like to weigh in a little bit here. I have absolutely no problem with the logic or the application of this fee schedule, so I don't want to suggest that we do away with it. I suspect that if I parked in the upper lot, two hours free, not knowing what the schedule is of our parking enforcement person, I could squeeze three hours before I got caught, you know.
Maybe some days.
Yeah, maybe some days, so. But she does a great job. I've seen her in action. She does a fabulous job. So I have no problem with this, and I, I'm somewhat sympathetic to, well, now we got to pay for something that was free, but it isn't free. And I've sat here, and I, I went to a meeting this morning, actually, it was in noon time for BSU Transit, knowing what was going on at the parking. I parked right across the street from Rapid Rays and walked, because I wasn't quite sure what I was going to encounter. And so I got there, and that upper lot was, I think there may have been three or four cars there. It wasn't that well utilized. So in any event, I have no problem. What I might suggest, however, and we've gotten some comments, and it hasn't been a lot of them, so I'm sometimes reluctant to react to a vocal minority, but giving them the benefit of the doubt, it's apparent we have some folks who park and commute into Boston on a regularly scheduled basis, maybe five days a week. And whether or not, in this pricing scheme, we could have a commuter pass that is a fixed amount each month, instead of the $5 a day, pick a number, 50 bucks a month, whatever, it ends up being less expensive for them based on the frequency of the utilization. And then, to say the administrator Behankel's point, if you have a section of the new parking lot that can, that those folks can in fact park in, because they're properly tagged, that that might be a possible resolution to some of the concerns. I'm not sure, I haven't thought it through. I'm not sure it makes 100% sense, but I just wanted to get that out there and get it on the table for you.
Similar to where I was going with student rate or monthly rate, and not, again, specifically to the lower lot. It is what it is today, but with this new lot, I just don't see how you can have that be free, too. I just, we just spent $450,000 on it, and there's going to be maintenance. But having some kind of, you know, pricing structure that works for, you know, people that, again, daily commute versus myself going to Boston.
You don't have to go to Boston.
Wherever.
I think...
I was going to say something similar, too. Five, we're talking about the $5 lot, but I'm getting emails about the $25 a week lot, or the $100 a month lot. And that just seems a little bit different when you put it that way. So if we could do something for frequent parkers.
Well, I think the new lot, you have the flexibility of potentially applying the resident parking permits that we've used in the, at the beach, or setting up monthly, monthly pricing for that lot. I just, given the amount of people using that, that lower lot, I wouldn't try to apply it to that right now. But I would say the new lot, it's certainly within walking distance. So consider the lower lot to be your premium parking that you pay more for, for the convenience of being right next to the transportation center, and the other lot having some sort of monthly or, the easiest thing would be just attach it to the resident parking permits that people already get.
Right. But let us, the point is, let us go back, and we've heard a lot of the different input from the city council. And it's important for us then to go back and give, come back to you, give you a plan, and you can, you know, work it the way you want to work it. But right now, we're not working off of anything. So what we'll do is, we'll concentrate on the new property, the new lot, and we'll talk about the improvements that we have to make to this lot. There will be some for pedestrian safety. And then we will make a recommendation to the city council on, you know, bring you a plan, and this is how we want to break it up, and see how the council reacts to that.
So what I'd like to see, just if we do the commuter pass, where we want to call it, again, it's $100 a month, $5 a week, or a 100 a week, $100 a charge, maybe, that's how I think. But then also make sure we set aside a regular, non-commuter.
Right.
I would, how many spots do we have down there?
Well...
You'll have 70-ish to play with.
I would not want all 70 to be commuter passes, because then you're taking away from just the here and there, like, I like to go to Boston Museum of Flags, get off, walk there. So to set aside a certain amount, you determine.
Right. And we'd also want to set aside for downtown businesses.
Right. Well, that's what I was about to say. When we purchased this, the thought was, you know, we were also trying to benefit the downtown that, you know, has limited supply of parking.
And the way you can get at that is, you know, you might look at the businesses in the area that are within walking distance, and you might look at what kind of services they provide. So you could provide a certain section of the lot for two-hour parking, or hour parking, or three-hour parking, whatever, to, you know, to encourage people that are, you know, going to those businesses to park at the lot. And you'll find mostly that that lot will probably fill up substantially in the warmer months, obviously, and it will be for the people that have businesses in that area as well. So we can't lose sight of our downtown businesses. And I'm not suggesting that we don't pay attention to our commuters, but I think the lot really has to have some substantial set aside for the businesses in the downtown. So we'll work on that, and come back to the city council with some ideas on that lot.
Last comment from me. Again, I trust staff will figure it out, or present us with something. I do just have to, again, reiterate that if we're already having this problem in the lower lot, I'm more than willing to bet that the same behavior is just going to move over to this lot, and it's largely because we've created micro units, and we say no one's going to drive, but the reality is, is everybody has two or three cars, and that's what has been going on with that lower lot. That's what's going on in all of our side streets. You know, they don't have adequate parking, case in point, right outside the window, and they're clogging up all of Cross Street. So I just, again, it'd be nice if things could be free and available for the commuters, but the reality is, is people just need parking overall throughout the downtown. So, thank you.
We have, if we ever get that pedestrian bridge in, that connects us to Bitterford, the parking garage is on the other side of the bridge, I think it's just a whole new dynamic when it comes to parking. Because theoretically, you could park in that garage, walk across the bridge, get to the train station. So I think there's going to be more to this story as time unfolds.
And I think we really have to spend time before the spring and summer months, making sure that we have a plan in place for the new downtown parking lot.
Okay. Is that it for that item?
For me, it is. I mean, we, I think unless the council is uncomfortable with it, but I think our task would be to come back with a proposal for the new lot that we have. I think if we can focus on that.
Is anybody parking outside of the tenants? Is the public, I mean, we just, we just broadcast to the public that...
Sure, and...
So...
There will be people parking there, which is fine.
Yeah, are we going to monitor that? Because now that you said RVs and tractor trailers...
No, we monitored. I've asked people to monitor it. Has, is that, is that the trailer gone yet?
So, as part of the parking lot, yes, there will be no recreational vehicles, no trailers, no campers, no, you know, none of that.
The simple thing right now, because there were people living in vehicles in that lot. I mean, the simple thing right now, the easiest way to enforce something where we're not in a pay system or collecting, is just no overnight parking, or no parking 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM or something like that. So we might just move a message board in there if it becomes a problem. It had an initial sort of clear out of vehicles that were there when we purchased it. But I think the simple thing would just be no overnight parking for now. We really want to get, we're going to put pedestrian actual, like, lights at the crossing, so when a vehicle is exiting, it'll sense it and actually set off a light, much like downtown parking garages in Portland or Boston that have blind walls directly onto a sidewalk. They have these detection systems, so we're pricing that out right now.
If you look where the yellow markings are on the picture, it can become a pedestrian hazard unless we really do what Director Fox is talking about.
So we're looking to do that in April, and then before we market this for widespread use, to just not attract people to pulling in and out of there just yet.
Okay. Next item C, discuss future meetings and the agenda.
Well, what we'll be doing, I assume, tomorrow is, I'll be meeting with the mayor and the deputy mayor, and we've got a pretty, we've got a good-sized meeting coming up next Monday. We actually have three meetings in a row. This, we have tonight, we have Monday night, and then we have February 5th, so they kind of all, and then we have February 12.
Holiday schedule's gone.
Holiday schedule's gone. The only other thing, I think, Your Honor, did you want to mention February 7th?
Yes, I got pretty much the consensus from most, most, Counsel Archer, you had, February 7th, the school board has asked us to join their meeting on Wednesday night at 5:00 for our joint meeting.
For February.
We have kids, so...
That's okay. Yep. I think everybody else was pretty well set.
Okay, all right. So unless there's something else...
We'll send a reminder on that as well.
Okay, I'll send something out to the superintendent tomorrow.
And that is it. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion by Counsel Hatch, second.
Second.
Counsel Johnston, roll call vote. Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counsel Parks.
Yep.
Counsel Gunn.
Yes.
Counsel Berman.
Yes.
Counsel Hatch.
Yes.
Counsel Hewitt. And Counsel Johnston.
Yes.
Motion to end our city, our council workshop, approved, 7-0. Have a great night, guys. Thank you.